Welcome to Egypt's Twelve, under the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. This meeting is being recorded and televised by Chelmsford Telemedia. If there's anyone else present who is recording or planning to record, would you please so indicate at this time? Hi, Lyanna. Okay, the first order of business is the consent agenda. Tonight, we have approval of the minutes of our most previous, of our most recent meeting on January 6th. Are there any questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
A move that we accept the regular school committee meeting minutes for January 6th, 2015.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Three, nothing. Okay. Next up, we have the student representative report. Owen and Montsy.
Hey, everyone. Hope everyone had a nice, long weekend. I'll start off with Lyme. This past Saturday, leadership in motion everywhere. The CHS organization sponsored the Lowell Wish Project. They sorted bed sheets, clothes, and other necessities for families and others in need. And the organization also donated money to this cause. Furthermore, in the recent DECA competitions, 21 CHS students have qualified for the state tournament. It will be held in Boston later this year. Among the many top CHS finishers, Joey Penn, senior, placed first in hotel and lodging management. And senior Zach Davidson placed first in human resources management. Next up, middle, both Parker and McCarthy Middle Schools received a grant from the Massachusetts Cultural Council to fund a project called The Big Dig. The PTOs of both Parker and McCarthy have been coordinating this for a long time. Big thanks to them. So basically, Ms. Kimberly Connor Hughes, a Harvard-trained archaeologist, will be visiting the McCarthy and Parker Middle Schools in the upcoming weeks, introducing students to the science of archaeology. Students will create their own artifacts, breaking them with a paper bag, trading their dig sites, and then reconstructing the artifacts. And these will all be displayed in their respective school libraries on the last day for a gallery walk. And then for athletics, recently, boy swimming beat out rival B.C. High by a score of 97 to 81. Senior John Finney won the 100 free, and senior Curtis Platil claimed second place for 100 free as well. Wrestling won Huge Over and Over by a score of 67 to 3. So, congrats to them.
Ten pins.
Girls hockey beat out Boston Latin 9 to 1, and then Al Gauckwin Regional by a score of 5 to 3. So they've been on a hot streak recently. And boys hockey lost a hard-fought battle to Bill Ricka recently by a score of 3 to 1. They deserved to win that game. And now I'll turn it over to Montsy.
Thanks, Owen. So, as I mentioned earlier, CHS qualified for the next round for the WGBH Quiz Show, and that will be taking place this weekend to the next level. So you guys can come support your fellow CHS students. Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, the children's play will be taking place. So, I'll be attending myself. This Saturday, SATs will be offered at CHS. Midyear starts next Tuesday, so a week from today. And on Tuesday, we'll have our F Block exam. We'll have our A and B exams on Wednesday, C and D on Thursday, and E and G on Friday. And also, our very own Kripa Joseph and Aru and Renegopal were awarded the Excellence in Music Award. And that's basically a $500 scholarship awarded up to, up to four seniors by the MMEA Northeastern District each year. And they demonstrated long-term commitment to their school music program and also to their personal music growth. And I've spent the last three years in concert choir with them, and I know that they really deserve this award. So, congrats to them. That's all.
That's great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next up, we have some good news. So, good news tonight, I think we, the school committee gets to start. This is a, this is a project that Al kind of spearheaded. We have in the audience Quinn Cooney from Chelmsford High. Al and I were talking a little bit last week about what, what the award should, should read, and, and we established that it could probably, pretty much just say, Quinn won everything last year. But, or, but, but I think we can be a little bit more specific. So, Al put together a list. Undefeated in the dual meet season, first at the MVC Championships, first of the championship division of the Ocean State Invitational, first in the Division One State Meet, and 22nd in the Northeast Regional Championship. Also named a Boston Globe Co-Runner of the Year, and he was just recently named the 2014-2015 Gatorade Massachusetts Cross Country Runner of the Year. So, Quinn, would you please come forward? We have a statistical score here.
It was only one of the accomplishments. Runner of the Year. But, thank you very much. Thank you for coming. And I think I'd be remiss if I didn't also mention that you're going to Dartmouth next year. And your academic success has been as impressive as your academic.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good. Okay, now you guys are in. Yep. Yeah, you need to go in. They're closing.
Don't worry about it.
Yeah, Marie. Great.
Okay. So, next on the agenda, we have some time for public input. This is a time for the school committee to listen to public input. We welcome public comments. But this is not a time for questions or debate. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Those who have comments, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Regina Jackson. My address is 9 Essex Place, Chelmsford, Mass. And I've come to address the school committee. The school committee needs to let the Chelmsford taxpayers and all the residents of Chelmsford know what action you are going to take, or not take, as we go forward. Are you going to fire the superintendent Frank Tiano and members of his team responsible for the colossal mismanagement of our money, or not? There is no reason to wait another day to let us know what you're going to do. The audit report is in, and it says what we already knew, or what a lot of us thought, that the school department cooked the books. And this has been going on for some time. And they got caught. Mr. Thomas, Al Thomas, said the other night, quote, "If people think this is just something that came up with this particular school committee or administration, I don't believe that's the case." And I don't either. But Mr. Tiano has been the superintendent since 2010. The superintendent settled with the business manager Kathy McWilliams, so she resigned. But that was after she was paid her $127,000 a year salary to stay home for four months. She didn't need to answer any questions or provide any explanations to anybody, to any of us. We heard nothing. She just got to go away. Kathy McWilliams is now out of the picture. The audit is done. Kathy McWilliams is gone. So there's no reason for the school committee to start, to remain silent. You need to start answering the questions that you told us you were going to answer a few months ago. We were waiting for the audit. We were waiting for legal, whatever. Well, time's up. It's been five months. We need some answers. This is not personal, and I certainly hope you don't take it this way. But, the superintendent Frank Tiano is the highest-paid person working for the town of Chelmsford. He makes $165,000 a year, plus bonus. He failed to do his job. He failed to take the responsibility for his team and his team's actions. He fired three people who had nothing to do with the financial mismanagement. He has lost the trust, confidence, and respect of many Chelmsford taxpayers, but myself included. The school committee, you need to let us know which direction you're going in. Are you going to continue with the superintendent and his select team and let them manage the $51 million budget and keep everything pretty much status quo? Basically, giving him a pass because, in my opinion, he's a nice guy, which I'm sure he is, or because he's your friend? Are you going to fire the superintendent and members of his team that were responsible? Because all employees, all employees in the town, or anywhere, need to be held accountable for their job performance. You have to do your job. Nobody should get a pass, for whatever reason. And to whatever way the school committee, whatever way you decide to, to go, will speak volumes as, as the town and as the school department works a way out of this financial mess for fiscal year 2015, and then as you plan ahead for fiscal year 2016. But your silence is no longer an answer. The towns, Chelmsford, the people of Chelmsford, the taxpayers, we need to know what you're going to do. The time to act is now. Either do something, or don't do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the committee at this time?
Kieran DiNato for Archibald Way. Well, I'm probably here to say something you probably haven't heard in a while. I just wanted to come and say thank you. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Tiano for staying focused. I know this has been a really rough road, couple of months. And you have a school system to run. And I think a lot of people seem to lose sight of that. We know the budget's a mess. We need to fix it. And I entrust that it's going to get fixed. But in the meantime, we have a school system that I am personally proud of. I had four kids who graduated from this school system. They've all gotten excellent educations, and they've now moved on to either to receive their college degrees and are working, or still in college. When you look at some of the things that, that Chelmsford is recognized for, I mean, CHS was ranked 246 nationally based on their standard test scores, graduation rates, student-teacher ratio. That's nothing to lose sight of. Chelmsford was also ranked 15 as one of the best school districts in Massachusetts for the, for your dollar. So, stop and think of a lot of the good stuff that's going on. And I, I want to thank you for staying focused and keeping the school district running while everything is getting investigated. I also want to thank the school committee. You're an elected official, but people don't get the fact that you're volunteers. All of this is your time. It's your time, your, all of your, everything that you're looking into, everything, you know, coming up with the, reviewing the audit results, and everything else. You're a volunteer, and I really want to thank you for the time and effort that you are putting into this entire thing to try to figure out how we're going to address the budget. One of the things I would like to see going forward is transparency and communication. And that kind of goes along with what Regina just said. I would like to see more transparency between the school committee, so that the entire school committee knows everything at all times. I can't tell you how many times I've read in the paper that certain individuals had received emails, but the entire school committee didn't know it. Communication, you need to be communicating back and forth. If communication had happened back in the fall or in the summertime, and it had been brought forth to the town so that the town knew, and in their budgeting process, could have addressed the shortfalls, then at town meeting, they could have made some very good decisions based on how we're going to fund the school budget. Instead, what happened is, everybody was caught off-guard. Town meeting, in my opinion, was a disaster. I can't believe that town meeting was spent hours upon hours deliberating as to whether they're going to fund our schools. They, there was mudslinging and accusations, and, you know, we want to send a message. Well, you know what? That's not what needs to be done. What needs to be done, it shouldn't be done on the backs of our kids. We need to fund the schools. We need to take responsibility for the schools. We need to go to the town and ask town meeting for the funding that we actually need. And maybe we wouldn't have spent $150,000 to close a fire station that doesn't need to close. Maybe we wouldn't be voting on all these non-essential budget items and expenditures, like buying a piece of property and a house, when we know that the money is better suited to fund our schools. But if communication's not there, we don't know it, and town meeting can't vote on it. So, that's all I have to say. Keep doing what you're doing. I'm glad the audit is in. Review it, and take whatever next steps you need to take in order to keep our school system at the highest level that it can be, and figure it out for the next year's budget.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the committee at this time?
Hi, Anita Tanini, A Columbus Out. The last time I came up to you guys, I had asked you whether or not you had an action plan and how you were executing on it. It's come to my attention, it's been in the news, that we now, Mrs. McWilliams is no longer an employee. So I'm assuming, at some point, you will have to fill this position, unless Frank decides to stay on. If that's the case, I would make the following recommendations. This position should be, you should require it to be a CPA. And the reason why I say it must be a CPA is a lot of the issues that we have had that have come up are accounting, lack of accounting knowledge. And a CPA is licensed. They require 80 hours' worth of education, continuing education, a year. Four of those hours have to be around ethics. So I strongly, strongly recommend that you do not look at hiring anyone for this position who is not a CPA. My second recommendation is to form a hiring committee that includes some financial people who know how to hire. In all due respect for the people sitting at this table, I don't think any of you have the experience of hiring A-quality finance people. And if we don't want this problem happening again in the future, I suggest you bring in some folks, whether it's citizens of the town, or you go over to, to the town accountant. She's a CPA. She knows how to hire. Bring her in. That helps bring the town together. Form this committee. Make sure everybody, whoever it is, signs off on it. And then finally, I strongly recommend, I know at the tri board, they were talking about possibly doing a home run petition and moving this position under the town. Prior to doing something like that, I would recommend that the school committee consider having this position report into the school committee, not the superintendent. That will clear up or prevent any conflict of interest or undue influence. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the committee at this time?
My name's Mara Shield, 11 Winslow Road. And I just want to say, I'm a supporter of the school committee, Dr. Tiano. And just following up with what Anita said, at the tri board meeting, Janet Askenberg had brought forward a motion about going out to the Mass DOR. And I believe, I'm not sure if this is done in conjunction with the Department of Ed, but they come in and do a review of the school and the town and see if it might be that you want to consolidate the town and school finance. And I think it's worth doing. It's a free, I mean, it's free as far as cost. Obviously, there's time commitments that people have to put in. But there are, you know, serious shortages of qualified school business managers, I believe, out there. And it might be an opportunity. It might not save the town tons of money, but it might add more controls in place. So I definitely think the board should consider Janet Askenberg's proposal that she brought forth. And again, thank you for your, all your time and effort. It is a volunteer board. I've been a volunteer in the school system, and sometimes you figure out, why am I doing this? But, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the committee at this time? Okay. Seeing none, we will move along to the first item under new business, which is the CHS Hall of Fame. I see a couple of familiar faces. George, will you come forward, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sure is. Thank you very much for having me here at our annual discussion.
No sidekick tonight?
Huh?
No sidekick tonight?
He's offered a dinner.
Oh, okay.
The Chelmsford High School Alumni Association proudly announces its Silver Anniversary 25th Annual Hall of Fame induction. The ceremony will take place in the evening of the 21st of March, 2015, at the Radisson Hotel in Nashua, New Hampshire. The program will include a social at 5:30, dinner at 6:30, and induction at 7:00. Those being inducted are as follows. John Carson, class of 1989, posthumously. J. Michael Schumer, Jr., class of 1978. Jeffrey Hall, social studies teacher from the high school. David McCosti, class of 1970. Michael McGreevy, class of 1975. Tim Mullin, class of 1975. Keith O'Brien, class of 1982. Alisa Simone and Warette, class of 1987. And Joanne Busquet-Sargent, class of 1976. For information relative to the purchase of tickets, call me at 978-256-3100. And if things work out, Al will have tickets in his pocket in a couple of days, so that you can contact and get tickets through Al. I know you people have been at this affair in the past, and we'll hope, hope that you can come again this year. As you know, it's going to be a great, great evening. Last year, much to my surprise, I actually, not that much of a surprise, we had a sellout. With about two weeks to go, we really ran out of tickets. And I think this is going to happen again this year. So, that's for the crowd to know, the audience to know, okay? So we're, we're looking forward to a great night. We've got some, again, nine outstanding people here. From outstanding teacher to an individual who's the executive director of the Ted Williams Museum and Foundation, to a brigadier general, to you name it, okay? We, we cover the waterfront, okay? And it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a tribute to the, to this education at Chelmsford High School. Because all of these folks are former students, okay? All alums. And we, we also honor staff members, as you well know. So this is a, it's, it's the 25th, 25th. And when I look back on it, I hardly believe that we've done this 25, we're going, we'll have, we will have done it 25 times. And, and the pool out there is enormous, okay? And we, we should be in facting maybe 30 or 40 a year, okay? And we'd never catch up. We'd never catch. I have a personal list of about 60, 60 that I would, that I would, would qualify. So, and, and every year, we, we keep, we keep producing more, okay? As they go out there and do, and become very successful in their, in their, in their lives. So, any questions? I'm full of answers.
How do you choose?
How do you choose? There's a committee. We have, there's a nomination process, okay? There's paperwork out there that gets filled in, okay? The three criteria are great things in high school. And that could be leadership, could be athletics, could be activities, music, whatever. And/or, great things in their profession, okay? And/or, great things in their community. We weigh heavily what they've done in their community, too. Okay, that's heavy. In fact, it, it runs through all nine of these. All nine of these people are very heavy in their community, okay? And that's, that's one thing we stress. And of course, great things in high school, obviously, okay? From athletics, to leadership, to music, whatever, okay? I mean, when you, when you look at the folks that we've inducted, from concert pianists to Olympic skaters, to hockey, we have, we have an individual that won three hockey, I mean, the, what do you call the ring, the?
Stanley Cup.
Stanley Cups with the Pittsburgh Penguins. Phil Bork, three, three of them, okay? You know, on or on? On or on? It goes on. Great attorneys, teachers, educators. We have an individual that personally himself launched 50 Atlas missiles. He was the man that pushed the button, okay? He's an astrophysicist. We, we have a fellow that graduated from MIT who wrote the book on drones. Okay? Radar. Okay? Roger Sullivan. Master 58. It goes on and on, okay? It's CHS.
How do you remember all of this, George? It just, it just amazes me that you can actually remember all of that. I can't even remember what I had for breakfast this morning. I mean, you just-
I can't remember that either.
You just have amazing memory every time I talk to you. You just can remember all this stuff. When they graduated. That's just, you know?
It comes with the job, I guess, I don't know. Yeah. So, again, thank you very much. And hoping to look, looking forward to seeing you folks on the 21st. It's going to be a great night. And it's, like I said, it's our Silver Anniversary, okay? And we're looking forward to it. Thank you for listening to me, okay?
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
Have a good night.
George, I'd just like- The hardest part in the nomination process is to get somebody to write out the application. There are so many people that say, why isn't so-and-so in? They should have been in the Hall of Fame years ago. And many times, it's because nobody's taken five minutes to write the initial application.
Exactly, yeah.
The forms are on our website. It's not hard. And so if there's somebody that you think belongs there, just, it doesn't take a long time. But that's what you have to do first. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Good, good point, Al. Well, thank you very much, folks.
Thanks again, George.
If I don't see you before, I'll see you on the 21st. All right? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have an update on the district improvement plan. This will be a mid-year report. Dr. Tiano?
Yes, what you'll see, what you'll see up on the screen, we have a PowerPoint presentation. It has a number of slides on it, but we will move through quickly as this is information that you folks have seen previously. We have our district improvement plan. We had shared with you last June the results of our one-year plan for last year. We had shared with you in September our goals for this year. And this is the midway point. This pyramid that we'd shared previously with you outlines how we're all connected with all of our goals in terms of our five-year strategic plan. Our district improvement plan is a one-year plan. And from there, our principals and our staff develop their school improvement plans and their department goals. And that moves into the individual educator goals, including administrators and all professional educators in our district. Last June, we had shared with you, we had updated our, our strategic plan so that you had a two-year snapshot from the spring of '13 to the spring of '14, where we were in each one of our different areas. And just as a reminder for you, our, our district improvement goals, it's a one-year plan. It's generated from the strategic plan. But more importantly, or just as important, But more importantly, or just as important, is it mirrors the four standards of the evaluation tool. When we had developed our strategic plan, it was as the educator evaluation tool was coming on board. So, each of our four standards mirrors that of the educational tool. Our first strategic objective is standard one, curriculum planning and assessment. And I'm going to hand that right over to Linda.
Okay, so this probably looks a little familiar to you. In your package, you have the actual plan in front of you. This is what we used in September to actually go over the district improvement plan. And we'll give you the update through that same presentation. And again, you'll see the same thing in June, once we complete what our activities are for this school year. So, like Dr. Tiano said, that our strategic plan, it mirrors the teacher evaluation process, which we have four standards. And you'll see that we have four objectives. And then we have initiatives that go underneath each one of those objectives. And I'll walk you through different parts. I'll turn it back and forth between Dr. Tiano, Ms. Fiori, and myself. So, if we start with objective one, you'll notice that this is what was in the dip for this year. The district is going to establish a comprehensive aligned system of instruction to ensure high-quality teaching in every classroom. We still have five remaining initiatives under this first objective. So, starting with initiative one, curriculum practices and alignment. And we'll talk a little bit more about this as we go through some of our presentations tonight. Our first action step for aligning curriculum, we continue to review the math and ELA standards that go through. And we're looking at those through data team meetings. We make our changes based on what we see from the data. This year, we needed to incorporate the ELL curriculum, which is the English Language Learner Curriculum. We have three programs, one at each level, which starts with reach, inside, and edge. And we work on those programs as we go through, similar to how we rolled out the standards for ELA and math. We are sending those out for the WEITA standards, which is World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. Continuing with this initiative are the next-generation science standards. Teachers are still working on learning about the standards and creating that alignment. This work will continue for the science standards at all levels. Tonight, you'll be hearing from Dr. Bayronivan, and he'll be giving you an update this evening as to where we are with that standard piece. And lastly, when we started off the school year, we had some draft standards-based report cards. And what we've done is we've created the committee, which has teachers and administrators on there. And we've worked with the technology department. At this point, we have finalized the standards that we'll be using for K through 4. We've also completed the vertical alignment to make sure that they build upon each other, because that's what the standards do. And what we'll do is the technology department is starting with the build in X2. And we will continue as a committee to create the benchmarks, which are important when you're going through to standards-based report cards. And then what that's going to look like for parent outreach. One of the things that we will be starting with is technically, at the elementary level, we do have standards-based report cards. It's just that the standards don't align with what we currently are reporting with enough information for parents. So, the report card itself will just have a little different look, but it shouldn't be too much of a transition. But we'll stop that process as a committee together to make sure parents are aware. We're also going to set up, for lack of a better word, like a dummy class to kind of see what that looks like before we start plugging in some grades. So, we have committee members that are willing to help out with this whole process. Moving forward for our strategic initiative two, which is about a testing that happens at our different levels. So, we still have three action steps that go along with this. This committee did vote to go with the MCAS testing for 2015 spring. Not much has changed with this initiative in terms of MCAS. We will still assess the students on the 2011 standards for ELA and mathematics in the same fashion that it's been for three years. We'll also still continue with the MCAS for science. Information from the state and park organization, as that comes out and becomes available, we update our curriculum teams. We are also making sure that we are checking out the final votes, which will not happen for state testing until the fall of 2015, after the administration of both park and MCAS this year, based on which teachers, which districts have decided to go with which testing for this year. And then what we'll do is we continue to go to our leadership meetings and our executive institutes to gather more information, to see what our colleagues are doing at this point. And we disseminate that information in our councils. Good, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Tiano for initiative three.
I started the transition without you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Initiative three talks about the feasibility of potential framework for full-day kindergarten. And we have, we've been working on this for a few years. This past year, even though we had completed the previous steps in terms of putting together, planning for this model, we'd updated the steps for this particular school year. And we have, and we've engaged in that process throughout the fall. When we had, when we were here with the school committee, despite our financial issues, the committee had asked us to go forward with applying for the Transition to Full-Day Kindergarten Grant. We had applied for this last year and had successfully garnered $46,000. We did not utilize that grant, so we had turned that back. This year, the grants, we had applied for $170,000. We were awarded $122,937. You know, this year. When we shared with you that we had actually gained that grant, the committee had asked us to move forward for what the potential, what that may look like for next year. So, we've continued down that path. And when we give the financial update, we'll talk more about the numbers and so forth, and how that plays into our overall budget going forward, and the potential for that. Just so you folks know, and we've shared this with you earlier in the fall as well, we've completely updated our literature review and our research regarding full-day kindergarten, where we added a half-day classroom at the Harrington School this year due to enrollment. We have real, real-time numbers for furniture and so forth, and items that are listed in the grant we'll be sharing with you a little bit later on. So, we've been moving toward this end. I know this has been a goal of the committee. This has been a goal of our strategic plan going forward. So, we will update with that with you a little bit later on in the meeting. The next initiative has to do with buildings and grounds, supporting instructional programs. If you go to the next slide. Linda, thank you. In terms of looking at instructional space as it relates to future instructional leaves, including special education programming, as well as, as we've been talking around this table regarding middle school science as well. And we have spent time over the, last year, over the summer, and throughout the fall, again, looking at our instructional space. One of the items that we have engaged in, in terms of looking at instructional space at the middle school, we went to Burlington Public Schools, where they had added brand-new science rooms at the middle school level, as well as renovated middle school science rooms. They have a school that was similar to our McCarthy School, a former high school, and so forth. And a gentleman by the name of Dr. John Papadonis, he's a former Chelmsford resident. He's a professor at Cambridge College. And he was the consultant to Burlington Public Schools in terms of the science rooms. He's somebody who is, works heavily with the DESE in terms of science licensure at the middle school level. And because he's a former resident here, his children grew up here, he lent his skills to us for free and gave us an update in terms of what that may look at the McCarthy School. So, we've been working with our middle school folks on this as well. When we talk with our facilities subgroup, we'll share with them our thoughts regarding that matter. Another action step for us in terms of working with Armark to ensure that, you know, the contracts followed. We do have ongoing meetings with Jeff Demers. Jeff was here a few months ago, reporting out what he's been working on in terms of our building principles. He's been meeting with them on a bi-weekly basis and providing us with reports in terms of their actions. And the last piece, in terms of looking at, you know, again, looking at facilities, we've been looking at not only the science piece and for special education programming, as well as around our research regarding the kindergarten piece as well. So, all of that's been happening this fall as well.
Okay, so that ends the objective one and the initiatives that are under there. We're going to move forward to objective number two, which is, oh, you have one more. That's me, sorry. I take it back, we still have another initiative. We have the NIASC report. At this stage of the game, the NIASC report has been sent into NIASC in October. They had a meeting in January, and they plan to give some feedback on that report either February or March. So, we're waiting on that. The NIASC committee and the building leadership team still works together to work on the recommendations. I touched base with Principal Colari. There are about 38 recommendations, and they've completed most of them. I think they have 11 of them left to address. So, they'll continue with addressing those pieces as they go through. So now, to objective number two, which again, follows the teacher evaluation tool, which is standard two, which is teaching all students. And if, under this objective, we have two initiatives that we are currently working on for the district improvement plan. We're going to start with the Mass Teared System of Support and UDL practices that we have in our district. So, when we started in September, we talked about the fact that our administration teams was getting some literacies around MTSS and the use of professional learning communities. Along with our curriculum review, we've updated our ELL curriculum, like I stated before, and we're working towards reviewing research-based interventions. At this time, our benchmark calendars are up to date and discussed with our teams. We have utilized our grant, some grant monies to obtain two consultants, one for the elementary level and one for the secondary level. They're working with both our admin team as a whole group, and they're going into the different schools individually to be working on some of the skills around MTSS. Each of the building teams will be creating a committee. We do have one that's already at Parker Middle School. Groups of teachers got together originally before we had the consultants, but the consultants will be working with them. And our elementary, middle, and high school will be creating the MTSS teams with their teachers. And this kind of continues into our second initiatives, which is aligning the schedules for our, for teachers to get together and look at resources. We have two action steps that are still here with this, and it's building those schedules around our UDL practices and common planning time. So, we started off with co-teaching at the high school level, middle school, and now we've implemented it at the elementary level. So, we're building in that time for those teachers to work together to learn from their colleagues in regards to co-teaching. And we also have our UDL practices, which is Universal Design for Learning. We do have the summer course that we run through one of our grants through Fitchburg State. And currently, Ms. Quinn and myself are teaching the multipart series at the high school level for teachers and UDL practices. And I'm going to turn it over at this point to Ms. Fiori. She'll be talking to you about strategic objective number three.
This is the entire strategic objective number three, family and community engagement. It basically describes how we get out information to the community. Frequently maintained website, blogs, social media, classroom and administrative blogs, Twitter, we do it all. Strategic initiative number one is the district will provide and upgrade telecom services. This past year, we did a variety of work in the schools, rewiring, wiring, adding wireless to Center and the Westlands Building. And that was completed in the summer of '14. We front-load all our work, and it's basically done in the summer, because that's the time when we work, because there's nobody here. Of course, we maintain a frequently updated website. As I've said before, we literally update it every single day. Going on, we have expanded school web resources with Web Path Express at the elementary level, PBS Learning Media, Quest, and the YouTube Educational Channel. We have ongoing communication with Connect Ed, Facebook, Twitter, and school and district websites. The district will use appropriate social media. Recently, we've added Pinterest to our list of social media that we're using in the district. It's a nice thing, basically a graphic display of things that you're interested in. Or, in our case, we put pictures on it from the district. The Technology Excellence Committee worked with me last year to basically test out different social medias, and Pinterest was the one that we decided on. The district will increase school and district presence on Chelmsford telemedia, which we've done. We've increased our webisodes of many of our shows, including Inside CPS, but not limited to Inside CPS, with preview content and promotional trailers. And we're working right now on three new shows. One of them has aired, Walking Through Wellness with Katie Sims. She's the department coordinator for health, family and consumer science, PhysEd, and something I'm probably forgetting. That was it, okay. And so, coming up next is The Right Stuff with Tom Wright, exploring the school counseling program. And after that, will be Strictly Business, which is a student production of DECA and the CHS Business Program. This past summer, we installed digital signage, as you know, at Harrington and the Westlands location. We have three buildings to go, McCarthy, Byham, and South Row.
And lastly, we have strategic objective number four, which follows with standard four, for the teacher evaluation, is professional culture. We have one initiative, and it's a pretty large initiative. There's eight steps to it that we're currently working on, which is our statewide education evaluation framework. So, this year, we are currently working on the seventh and eighth part of this whole process. And that includes district determined measures and feedback surveys. So, we have, we're in the process of collecting our first year for the evaluation tool for district determined measures. Last year, we worked in grade-level groups to create these district determined measures. Teachers have already implemented the formative assessments for their students. We took the time in November to work in groups, grade-level groups and departments and levels, to look at the data, the formative data, to start seeing where our students would need some additional changes in our curriculum and pacing guides. And then what our plan is to do is to implement, obviously, the summative pieces. We have a few groups that are doing some repeated measures and holistic testing. But in May, we're then going to get together as a district on a professional development day to sit back and now look at hard data, which has formative assessment, formative and summative assessments, that we can see where our students' growth is, between low, moderate, and high growth for the first year. We have an evaluation team that we work together with to kind of talk about some of these things and how that's going to look for teachers. And then the last part is in our curriculum groups, we are working together to create the surveys for feedback from students and staff members in order to put, to gain that piece in our artifact collection to help us with our practice. So, at that point, at the end of the school year, we should have at least completed, started the full completion of the eight parts of the evaluation tool. And then we will continue to refine it as a district and as a committee. And we'll open it up for some questions about the current updates that are here.
I have a question about the NIASC. I know we filed paperwork in the fall after the termination of the three positions. I was wondering if there was any response to them, since at least the librarian position impacts our NIASC standing.
Right, I did talk to Principal Colari. So, he submitted that in October. And they had their meeting in, the NIASC committees had their meetings in January, this January. So, he's expecting some feedback from them in regards to that piece in either February or March, he told me.
Other questions? Can you, can you just review the park timeline at the state level?
Right. So, right now, what's happening is districts had to make the decision if they were going to administer park or MCAS. And we all did that, we let them know by September 30th. The, if you were MCAS, you were ordering your materials, which is what our principals have already done at this stage of the game. Park, they're getting the literacies around how to actually, how to do the online testing. What will happen is at the end of this year, they're going, the state's going to look at both the park testing and the MCAS testing, and do that equal percentile linking like they do when they change over their testing. And at that point, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is supposed to take a vote in the fall of 2015 as to what the testing will look like for 2016, whether we continue with MCAS, whether we go to park, or we go with a park-like type test for the state of Massachusetts. And that will be for all districts. They won't, it won't be a choice. You're going to do this.
It won't be a choice this time around.
Correct.
Where would a park-like test come from?
They would have to create, well, actually, in talking to, well, I think you, I think you were with us a day. The state was actually going for park-like testing until the funding-
Right, that's the whole thing. That's why when they brought up this park or MCAS, if we choose to stay with MCAS, all of the technology investment we've made will still come in handy, because MCAS is going to that testing method. So, we would have had to have it anyway.
Well, if the state pays all the money to design a test, how much is park costing to design?
I don't know.
A lot.
A lot of money.
Be a lot.
Okay, and the, that would roll out then in 2016 in which grades, three through eight?
It would be three through eight.
Right. And so, the kids at the high school level are not going to see park?
No, your current, hold on.
Probably in their career, right?
Our current eighth graders are the last ones to take MCAS as we know it, because it goes with our competency determinations. We can't change the game for graduation at this point. So, our current sophomores will take the regular test. And then our eighth graders will be the last ones to take the MCAS test.
But they'll continue all the way through high school?
Right, and then they'll continue through it. There's a couple of districts, like you have a choice, after you made the choice to go to MCAS or park, you have the choice to do grades nine and 11 this year with, if there was monies available. So, obviously, going with the MCAS, we didn't go that route. So, they are doing some of the field testing of what that looks like at the high school level. And then they'd have to roll that out, like anything that they've done, there has to be a three-year rollout for this to work.
Al?
It was in the news a week or so ago about having to take a citizenship test in order to graduate. Have we received any information on that?
We haven't, I think that, was that Alabama? That has required it. Somebody had, I saw the same article, I glanced over it. I want to say it was Alabama, but no, not right now.
Nothing, yeah.
Do you, can you give us a little bit of guidance on when the surveys, the student surveys of the teachers, are we going to see those this year?
Well, what's happening is we have to create them. So, the, in talking, in looking at the literature from the state, there's, they've given us some guidance, but we need a little bit more. And as districts are still working with the district determined measures, they're still trying to build what that looks like. Couple of things happen with the surveys. They can go, it's up to us as a group to decide where that should- They can go, it's up to us as a group to decide where that should go within the evaluation tools. So should it be a formative survey? Should it be a summative survey? Should it be in the middle? The best way to think about it, and especially when we talk to the teachers in regards to this, it's another piece of artifact to help you put that whole process together. So I've got some data, I have my artifacts, I have your observations, now I have surveys of what's happening, so I can create a whole picture. So what will happen is, once we get through the part with the district determined measures, as a group, we're reading the literature and trying to see what that looks like, what would be the best-case scenario. And again, talking to our leadership groups that we're all connected with to see, get some best practices with districts that may have already started this process. We know that, and I've actually seen it in some of the department meetings, people are, there are teachers and administrators that already do this. They were just doing it naturally to see what, how many people are actually using surveys, how they're using them, what would be best, and then sharing that information.
So you don't expect to see it at the end of this year?
I don't know. I would like to, but I can't guarantee that.
Fine. Okay, anything else? All right, well, thank you for that. We will move along. A very similar presentation, I think. A math and science program update with Dr. Bayronavon. Dr. Tiano?
Yes, throughout the past year, we've brought a variety of department coordinators to you. You know, Mr. Wright, we had Ms. Whittlesley here last May, and Mr. Brooks in terms of special education and everything around Department of Student Services. We brought in Dr. Bayronavon to speak to math and science. So we gave you kind of the broad view of what's happening across the district, and now Matthew will give you a more narrow view. And with that, Matthew, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you for having me here tonight. So the plan of what I would like to discuss with you is a combination of the mathematics and the science. So in first, an overview in regards to the math, we have fully implemented the new curriculum and the new standards within the Chelmsford Public Schools, and I'm going to review what we have done. And then I'm going to spend the second part talking a little bit about the science and the new upcoming standards, the next-generation science standards, that will be coming to most of the nation, Massachusetts, and specifically Chelmsford, and what we are doing as we unpack the standards and make plans for the implementation of these new standards. So we begin by talking about the mathematics. What I want to share with you first is the state timeline for the implementation, and then I'll talk a little bit about what we, as a Chelmsford Public Schools, have done. So it started, it's the 2011 curriculum frameworks is when the new standards came out for Massachusetts. And the state asked the districts to spend the 2010-11 school year to basically come up with a plan within the district and to kind of unpack the standards and do some comparison work. This was the work before I began my position within the Chelmsford Public Schools. My first year was 2011-2012, and the state asked to do a partial implementation with the overlapping standards. And approximately 70% of the new standards matched the old standards. So they said focus on the old standards, but just those 70% that overlap. And that was the 2011-12 year, both with what they wanted for instruction and also for assessment. That's how MCAS worked for 2011-12. For 2012-13, they asked for a near-full implementation. It's still focusing on those same 70% standards, but instead of using the old frameworks, this was the first year where we looked at the new frameworks. But instead of asking schools and districts to focus on all 100% of the new standards, they said still focus on those 70% that overlapped. And then 2013 and 14, they asked to have a complete implementation of the new frameworks at all grade levels. That didn't necessarily mean you have to have new curriculum, but you have to adjust your current curriculum to match the new standards. And these are the things that we did at all of the three levels. So if we take a look first at the elementary school level, we had used prior to the new standards, the Math Expressions 2011 edition. And what we decided to do in collaboration with teachers, our math coach, some administrators, teachers of course, is to continue with the Math Expressions program, and we started the revised one with the new standards for 2013-2014. And what we did was we offered professional development to all the teachers within the Chelmsford Public Schools in the elementary level on the revised Math Expressions curriculum. And that was done through our math coach, as well as a consultant through the Math Expressions program. And what we have done since that implementation that started in 2013-14 is we are doing an annual review of the pacing guides that the teachers work on with our math coach over the summer to review what occurs and adjust the pacing. We like to have consistency with the standards, but we allow the teachers to instruct in the means that they find to be most effective, sometimes using outside resources. But we want to have some consistency with the standards to make sure that we cover all of the required standards by the end of the year. And finally, we have two programs that we use to support and to help students with their learning. We have the Study Island program that we use in the elementary school and also the middle school, and that's for third and fourth grade, to help students with their learning and also as an assessment tool. And then we also have the Extra Math program, that is an optional program that we offer support for teachers, first through third grade, and that's a way to give them additional support on their number facts, on basically their number systems, understanding addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division. Moving to the middle school, the Math Expressions program is a K to five program, and so we continue the Math Expressions program at the fifth grade level. And we follow that same protocol that I outlined at the elementary level for fifth grade as well. For the sixth through eighth grade, we have recently adopted a new program, which is the Big Ideas program. This was a program that was actually created after the new frameworks were created. So it is not a program that was kind of modified to match the new standards. Instead, it was one created by Dr. Ron Larson, who's probably the most well-renowned publisher of mathematics textbooks, created this Big Ideas program. Before we selected this program, we had a committee that involved teachers, the math coach, some principals, myself, and some high school teachers that kind of looked at a variety of different curriculum to make sure that, first of all, it fit the needs of the teachers and the students, and also really was aligned to the new standards. And we actually piloted the Big Ideas program in some of the middle school classes, and we piloted another program. And it was a near-unanimous vote that we moved to the Big Ideas program. So what we did do is that instead of implementing it at the same time at all three grade levels, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we staggered it. We started in 2012-13 in the sixth grade, and then 2013-14, we moved to the seventh grade, and approximately half of the eighth grade, there was one particular class that, one particular level at the eighth grade that we adopted in 2013-14. And for this year, 2014-15, the remainder of the eighth grade has adopted the Big Ideas program. So now entirely, the middle school has an updated curriculum and are covering all of the required standards. Similar to third and fourth grade, we use the Study Island program as a way to assess the students and help them with their learning. And we also began piloting this year the IXL program, an online program for additional support that we have about a dozen middle school teachers asked to use and are using it in their classrooms. And this actually, as I'll speak about in a moment, came from the work of the high school teachers that really use it extensively and love the IXL program. Some of the middle school teachers wanted to, and so we're piloting it this year, in addition to using Study Island in all of our middle school classes. In looking at our middle school, this is kind of a snapshot of the curriculum. So in fifth grade, as I mentioned, we still use the Math Expressions program. And in sixth grade, we use the Course One of the Big Ideas program. At the end of the sixth grade year, our sixth grade teachers do quite an extensive data analysis, looking at a variety of factors to help determine what level students will begin in seventh grade. And what we really want to do as a department is make sure we are putting in students in the correct level so that they can succeed. In whatever level they go in, they are not pigeonholed in this level throughout the rest of their middle school and high school career, as we do have a lot of fluidity, approximately 10% of our students move from one level to the next year to year. In the seventh grade, we have our Big Ideas Course Two, which is just the traditional curriculum. We offer an accelerated version of that, which is a faster pace, a little bit more in-depth, a little bit higher-level problem-solving skills. And then we have our Honors program at the seventh grade. The Honors program covers the entire seventh grade curriculum and half of the eighth grade curriculum in that one academic year. And the reason that they have such a rigorous pace is that we want them to be able to cover a full Algebra I program in their eighth grade year, as that's the next level for the honors. So in eighth grade, we have that Big Ideas Course Three, covers the general curriculum. We have the accelerated version that matches up with the seventh grade. And then the honors, as I said, is a ninth grade Algebra I program at the eighth grade level, which gives the students who are at that level the opportunity to begin high school at the Algebra II level. And now, as we move to talk a little bit about the mathematics at the high school level, in 2012-13, what we did was we looked at all of the syllabi for our courses. And we knew that we were not going to be getting curriculum updates at this time because our priority was on the elementary and the middle school level. So what we did over the 2012-13 year is we spent that time to look at all of our courses and make revisions so we're able to match what the new standards have asked of us. And after we have done that, and that was, we completed that at the end of 2012-13, we then decided, okay, the middle school has finished their curriculum adoption this year, it's time for us to take a look at the curriculum adoption for the high school level. So we followed a very similar process to what we did at the middle school, where we had a variety of high school teachers, we included a middle school teacher on this, we had some administrators, I was on this, as well as our middle school coach. And we looked at four different curricula that addressed the new standards at the high school level. And we looked at a few of them, we did a brief pilot of a few different programs, and it was the teachers who selected the Big Ideas program for the high school, which matches exactly the same program at the middle school, and it's a continuation for ninth, 10th, and 11th grade, Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. The implementation program of this is that this year here, 2014-15, our ninth grade classes, which are our algebra classes, have been adopted for this year, so our courses began this year. Our 10th grade classes are next year, 2015-16, and for almost all of the students, that's geometry, unless they were on the previous model that had eighth grade geometry under our old system. And also, some students will also be taking Algebra II for those students that double up, and I'm going to talk about what the courses look like in a moment. And then our 11th grade classes, which will primarily be Algebra II, as well as pre-calculus, the plan for implementation for a new program would be 2016-2017. And as I mentioned briefly, the IXL program is a program that we use at the high school level as a way to provide additional support for our students and an additional assessment piece. And it came actually from one of the high school teachers who was new to our department. He used the program in a previous district, and we piloted it last year in a few classes. They loved it, and now all of our teachers use the IXL program at the high school in one capacity or another. So with all of these revisions to our curriculum at the high school, I offer you what appears to be slightly confusing, but actually makes quite a bit of sense. And those of you at the table here have a larger version of that, I believe, in your packet that you can take a look at. No?
Not so much.
Okay, well, so this is a revised scope and sequence. And really, the only change that we made to this is that instead of having what we used to have is the intermediate algebra, ninth grade course, and then the advanced algebra, 10th or 11th grade course, we, which is called for in the standards, are moving back to a traditional Algebra I, Algebra II. This does not affect the later courses, as we have pre-calculus, calculus, and so forth. Really, the only change is changing the names and slightly what is covered with our intermediate and advanced courses being Algebra I, Algebra II. The only other course which is not related to the new standards is that we are transitioning to our Intro to Statistics course, instead of it being a semester course, being a full year course, as it would now count towards a full-year mathematics credit, and there's been a lot of demand for students to ask for that course who are not comfortable taking it at the AP level. So this here, we'll be able to, in a one-page snapshot, show students, counselors, parents, what all the options are. There are additional handouts that are available for guidance counselors, parents, that I'll be disseminating at the open house, so they can see, based on where you start in eighth grade, what all the different options are on one page. But this is a full-page snapshot to basically see where you start, what your options are, with the fluidity there, if you are to double up, and what you can set yourself up for by the time you graduate Chelmsford High School. So what I think I would do is, before I transition next into the science, maybe we could, if you want, take a few minutes, if you have questions about the math, and then I could transition to what we're beginning to do with the next-generation science standards.
I have a quick question. When the state made the determination to just utilize 70% of the old curriculum back in 2011, when that class took the MCAS in 2012-13, were they at a disadvantage?
Well, yes and no. You know, I would say, no, they weren't at a disadvantage, because we still, in our curriculum, covered everything that we were supposed to cover, because we kept the same curriculum. However, they were only being assessed on the standardized test on those key 70%. So they kind of say, it's like, we call it power standards, although 70% is more than what we call power standards, which are about maybe 25%. So they said for our assessment, it takes more time as you unpack the standards. We're going to just focus on that 70% that overlaps. However, at least us in Chelmsford, what we did is we still covered 100% of the standards. What we did is that, okay, those 30%, we focused that primarily on the months of May and June after the MCAS exam, because we wanted to make sure we, our students going forward, had the knowledge that they needed on all five of the main topics.
So that class would be freshman at the high school now. Are they going to, is that group, I hate to use the word cohort group, but that group going to be looked at at the 10th grade level when they take the MCAS again, to see if there might have been a disadvantage against them?
Right.
Because that was a state, that was a state recommended to do that.
Right, so the state, and this was not just at the middle school level, per se. This was really, this was really done, you know, overall at the elementary and middle school. Now, traditionally, and this is not necessarily in Chelmsford, but middle school math scores at the state level are the lowest. They're strong in the elementary, they're strong in the high school, and they move down a little bit at the middle school level. So that's where a lot of the discussion happened at the state level on that. And so within Chelmsford, what we did is, okay, we know those are the 70% we have to focus on, we made a modified scope and sequence for that year to make sure we covered that in time for the state assessment. But again, we want to make sure we covered that full curriculum, no matter what, and I do know that we did that at all the levels.
Can parents override the placement when they move up a level?
Yes, so there is a process for override. So there's the recommendation that is given by the teacher, and that's sent home at both the middle school and the high school level, once the levels begin. And then there's an override process. And the override process is a little bit different at the middle school and the high school level, but generally, the parents fill out a form and they explain what their reasons are. And then that's where I take over as a department coordinator, and I have the conversation with the parent, with the student, with the teacher. We look at the data, and based on what it looks like in the conversation, I either make a decision about, yes, we're going to, we allow you to do the override and you can go to the next level, or if I feel as though the student will not be able to be successful for one reason or another, then the override does not go through. Having said that, for the most part, if a child, particularly a child, not so much the parent, but if the child really wants that challenge, is willing to put in the effort in, we allow the override to go through and give the child the opportunity to test themselves out at a higher, at a higher level.
Are most of the requests at the high school level?
Most of the requests are at the high school level, yes.
Because, I assume, because once they lock in, they can only get so far in the skills?
Well, we do have availability, there are students who are at a certain level and want to move up, and we make accommodations for that, either through the, through summer work, through additional work. Some students will offer, and I approve, taking a separate course on the side so they could get to an honors level. The philosophy, not just of the math department, but I believe of the schools, is we want to give every child the opportunity to succeed, and if a child wants to do the work and is willing to do the work, then we want to give them that opportunity, and we make accommodations for that. for that. And I've been doing that throughout my time here.
Sounds good. Anything else?
Okay. Great. Okay, so we move to the next-generation science standards. And a little bit of background information in regards to these standards, is that this was created as a collaboration of all the large national science associations. They wanted to make sure that everybody had a hand in this. They wanted teachers involved, they wanted professors involved, they wanted businesses involved, they wanted actual PhD scientists involved, as well as the national organization, because they wanted to make sure that this movement to these standards would be adopted and approved by nearly all the states, if not all of the states. And the way that this looks is set up on a K to 12 level, actually, a pre-K to 12 level, where we have four of these core ideas, okay, within the discipline of science. The life science, physical science, earth and space science, and then the engineering and technology. And these core ideas really match our current frameworks, with some slight exceptions to it. And what we're gonna do throughout this presentation here is talk about what we are doing at the elementary, the middle, and the high school level, to see what these changes are, and how the Chelmsford Public Schools are going to adapt with these changes. Now, this is a little bit different, because these have actually not yet been approved, yet. But what we have been told is that they are 100% going to be approved. This is not something like in the discussion we were having a few minutes ago about Park, that maybe it's gonna happen, maybe we're sticking to MCAS. This has been something that the Massachusetts Department of Education has said, we are going to vote and approve this, we just might be making some changes. So the background information on it, from the Massachusetts perspective, is they came up with a draft proposal to the standards in April of 2013. And then they made some changes to that originally. And then it was put out in a revised draft proposal in November of 2013. And what they said was, we want to give a long window, approximately a one-and-a-half to two-year window, where we have the entire public, give them the opportunity to comment and make suggestion for changes on this. What they found is that under the previous frameworks, the timeframe was very little, and some people felt like their voice could not be heard. So they said, we're gonna give everyone a large timeframe to share their comments. And that the anticipation is that the final draft of these standards will be approved January of 2016. And similar to the standards for mathematics and the standards for ELA, Massachusetts has their own version, that has up to 10% of their own standards added in, where they feel like the national NGSS standards is lacking. So, that is going to come up to a vote January 2016. And one of Chelmsford-owned teachers, Joan Caderas, eighth-grade teacher at Parker Middle School, she actually served on the committee that worked on the draft of the standards as a teacher, for her input on this. So, the state has basically said to us, what we want to do is ask you to have it fully implemented in 2016, for 2016-17. We're going to encourage you to do a partial implementation for 2015-16, even before it's officially approved, because we know it's going to be improved, you're not required to. So what we're doing at all the different levels here is seeing, let's unpack the standards, let's see if we understand them, let's see how much changes there are, and how are we going to meet the needs of the students. So, we begin at the elementary level. In summer of 2014, there was a teacher-led curriculum writing project, where we had a teacher from each of the K to V grade levels, that compared the old standards, or the ones we currently use, to the proposed next-generation science standards, and come up with a proposal for how are we gonna address the new standards? What things might shift, what standards are new, and how are we going to adopt them? So that plan, a proposal, was put together this summer. What we are now working on, over the winter time, is we are forming a committee, that started out of Dr. Hirsch's group of Elementary Curriculum Advisory Council, ECAC, and we are forming a subcommittee for people that want to focus on these new science standards. What, what our plan is, is we're gonna look at that draft proposal that was put together by the teachers, and we're gonna figure out how effective this plan is, what modifications might need to be made, and what things can we actually incorporate for the 2015-16 year during this partial implementation, and what things will we need to hold off for the 2016-17 academic year, when we have that full implementation. In addition to working with the elementary teachers on this science committee, Dr. Hirsch and I are also on a collaborative group within Middlesex County, of other districts focusing on the elementary level in particular, to see how other districts are addressing these next-generation science standards, and that's coming up later this month, and we're gonna be doing a few of those together, to see how other districts are doing this. So a combination of the work that we're gonna be doing together on this committee, as well as the work that the teachers are working on, we're hoping to have a partial implementation for the standards for the beginning of next year. At the middle schools, a similar model was used, where the summer of 2014 was a teacher-led curriculum writing project, where we had teachers at each of the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade levels. Grade V focused on elementary, because the grade V MCAS is a combination of third, fourth, and fifth grade, so the middle school is really a sixth through eighth grade group that got together to work on it over the summer, and they kind of focused on the same thing. What do we have right now that we're doing, what are the expectations, where does it already work, what things do we no longer need to cover, what things are we gonna be asked to cover that we don't cover right now? And they came up with a proposal over the summer. So we're doing a similar approach, where we're using department time and some early-release time, to work with sixth and eighth grade science teachers to look at that plan and make revisions to it. And what we've also done is we've incorporated Dr. Marilyn Sweeney, the technology coordinator, and her technology teachers into this conversation, because as we talked about a little bit earlier, one of the four core ideas under the next-generation science standards is technology and engineering. So we're gonna be working in collaboration with the technology department, to make sure that we have a plan that covers all of the standards required at the sixth through eighth grade level. Currently, the way our courses are set up at the sixth through eighth grade level at the middle school, is we have physical science primarily at the sixth grade level, life science is primarily the focus at the seventh grade, and earth science is primarily the focus of the eighth grade. The next-generation science standards offer middle schools two options, as to how they want to address science. They have the option that we have here, where you stick with a focus area of a physical science, life science, and earth science, or they have the option of an integrated, where you take all three, and you focus on all three in each academic year. And one of the things that we are doing in this committee at the middle school level is determining what approach we want the Chelmsford Public Schools to take, and that's primarily going to be based on the teacher input, as we unpack and really learn these standards. So we'll be examining our current model, which is a physical science, life science, earth science, and determining how to best fit the needs of what the expectations are for the next-generation science standards. And finally, the high school level, as we look at the three levels, the high school level is in the best shape of the three, as a lot of the work, and a lot of the subject areas that they focus on now, is already aligned to the next-generation science standards, although there is some work that needs to be done. During the 2013-14 academic year, the teachers began to unpack the standards and figure out how aligned they were within their different subject areas of biology, and chemistry, and physics, and that was done last year. During the summer of 2014, they chose to do something a little bit different. Instead of looking at the courses in general, like we saw at the elementary and the middle school, the high school science teachers wanted to focus primarily on their advanced placement, their AP courses, and to make sure those were aligned to the new standards, because that was something that was being assessed almost immediately, in fact, this year, for some of the AP. So they wanted to focus on that right away, whereas these next-generation science standards are not going to be official for another year, year and a half. We are doing some work this year, in regards to the next-generation science standards at the high school level, and one of our high school teachers, John Morris, is running a multi-part series, which actually began last Friday, where he's working with the teachers on looking at the individual courses, to find out how they're aligned to the next-generation science standards, and figure out what we need to do within each of those courses, to make the changes for that partial implementation next year, and the full implementation for the following year, 2016-17. Our scope and sequence for the high school is shown as follows. We have three different options, although there are four different levels there. We have a Biology I, for students that are coming up, which is our Level III course. We offer two different variations of physical science, for students who come in as freshmen, both at the honors and the H2 level. And then we have Bihonors, Biology at the honors level. And it is our initial belief, as we've unpacked the standards at the high school level, that this model of biology, as we look at biology, chemistry, physics, environmental science, or a physical science, biology, chemistry, and possibly physics, or a biology, chemistry, and then a variety of AP classes, would be able to continue under the next-generation science standards. As I mentioned in the beginning, we talked about high school, the high school is really in the best shape, where we feel is that we don't have to make any significant changes to the courses, all the changes would be minor in their nature, and the scope and sequence, this is something that I just created, actually, working with the high school science teachers, this should not change much at all, if at all, as we move towards these next-generation science standards, and also shows what AP courses we offer at the high school level, and then the numerous electives that are offered to, to the students within the science So at this point, I can now entertain either additional questions on the math, or some of the questions involving the science at any of the different levels.
I don't have any questions, but I, I think today, but I was watching TV, you know, nothing else to do. And there was a program that was being featured on scientists in the classroom. The idea was to bring real scientists into cla, not for the high school, for little kids.
Right.
And by the end of the program, they showed, all the kids wanted to be scientists. So I don't know how widespread that is, or anything else, but just in that brief exposure, it was really well-received. The other thing on a, I don't know if you ever have heard this, but in the 70s, we had science classes, I think supplemented, by TV from U Lowell. That's how long ago we had, you know, this possibility. I don't know the details on it, Mike Tate certainly could tell you, but it would seem to me, with the growth of all different parts of the science programs at U Lowell, that it might be something that, you know, it could be done at some point, because it's a, you know, obviously, they're a great resource, and I think they're very open to serving the community right now.
Yes, and we, we do have a relationship right now with UMass Lowell, in particular in the Graduate School of Education, where we actually have been afforded, over the past couple of years, some new kits, free of charge, just bringing, allow their student teachers to come in and do them, then we got the teachers training, and, and giving them brand-new, brand-new kits that align to the new curriculum. So, that is a great relationship, and I, I have, I have a great relationship with UMass Lowell, both math department and the Graduate School of Education, and actually, I began forming a relationship with the science department, and one professor in particular within the science department, and I'm hoping to, you know, or I'm hoping the Chelmsford Public Schools, you know, really grows that relationship as well, and I think that's, that's a great suggestion, so thank you.
Did you have a chance to see the Salmy brothers when they came in to talk?
No, I did not, but I, I talked to Mr. Steves about that, I, I was at a, at a meeting that day, but I heard nothing but positive things about that.
And they worked for Space Techs?
Yep, yeah.
Okay? And for the kids to hear, you know, how they got there, and their emphasis was on doing things, projects, and, you know, they were doing all kinds of things when they were in high school, and they both applied to get in there, and they were hopeful that one would get in, they both got in. But the stuff, it's so fascinating, you know, people, they did as a project that they filmed, a high, high-altitude balloon, and they had a, these new cameras that there are, you know, that you can use for anything. So you could see, you know, at 3,000 feet, 10,000 feet, 20,000, whatever, I mean, anybody that wasn't interested in, you know, in that dimension of it, it was great. So, again, anytime somebody can come in who's working in such an exciting field, I mean, by the way, they emphasized, I don't know if you saw on the news, but their, their way of making money is to recover parts of the launches.
Right.
They missed. And they, one of the big points in their presentation, I'm sorry to take time, but I thought it was pretty good, is that failure is important. So they missed, but they, they also put around that in parentheses, well, we were close. You know, I mean, you know, having seen that presentation, any chance we get to bring in people who are working in fields like that is huge, because, you know, some of the science classes that I had, we're back in the olden days, nobody thought of anything about it being exciting, you know, but, and you hear two kids like that, that are so pumped up.
Those two little charac, those two characters have been doing things, they grew up on our street, and, and they've been doing things since they were little kids.
So any chance you get somebody like that, it's great.
Bright, bright kids.
Taking on the new, you know, the science part of the curriculum, has this been very challenging for you?
I wouldn't necessarily say it's been a challenge, it's been time-consuming, but it's something that, you know, I feel as though I've relished the opportunity, I've enjoyed it, I know a lot of the teachers already, and I've been through the process with the math standards of unpacking curriculum, unpacking standards before and going through that process, so these next-generation science standards are very similar, the process, so I've been through that one time, so for that, I feel very comfortable with, but overall...
Did the position require that you get any additional certifications or training?
Well, no, the way certification works is that I'm certified K through 12 math, and I have my administrator license to be a supervisor. And so you have to, by Department of Education regulations, have your certification, your primary certification in at least one of the fields in which you supervise, so for me, it's the mathematics, so it didn't require an additional certification. Although my doctoral degree is in math and science education, so I don't have the strong content of some of the high school teachers for chemistry, biology, physics. I do have many advanced coursework in philosophy of, of science, the history of science, a lot of those courses I took at, at the doctoral level.
With respect to the handling and disposal of dangerous chemicals in the department, who does that?
Yeah, so John Morris, he's our safety officer, and he's in charge of that, that's a separate position, it's a stipend position to a teacher, and he's in charge of that for the whole high school and all the courses, and he does an excellent job with that.
Good, thank you.
We also have a sci, a sc, a science clerk, that works with the chemicals as well.
I just wanted to add to what Al mentioned earlier, he beat me to the punch. One of the things that I found, and you read through any of the studies, is the sooner you get sciences and engineering down to the lower levels, the more educated they get, and, and not only do they just get educated, they get excited, you know, they want to be engineers. You know, you talk to some of the kids, I remember a couple of years ago, I went into McCarthy, and they were working on a project building a bridge, but out of cardboard, and I was taken back a little bit, you know, that, well, you know, why aren't they using, you know, and that really wasn't the point, the point that the kids were excited about, you know, coming up with this design, on how to come up with this suspension bridge, and the whole technique behind building a suspension bridge. So, you know, the, the one thing that I would really, really stress, is push it down as far as you possibly can, even way down into the elementary schools, the kids are gonna get excited. I mean, one thing this country needs is scientists, we don't have them. We are being outrun by every country in this world, when it comes to technology. All the new technology that's coming out is coming out in the third world.
Yeah, and I think that the teachers would actually support exactly what you're saying, and what Mr. Thomas is saying, because what I've done over the last month to two months is I've gone to visit each of the elementary teams, at all the different grade levels, to get, kind of first of all, learn a little bit about what is going on, what are you teaching, how does it work, and then figure out, again, what the plan is going to be. And what I'm hearing over and over again is, is that the kids love the science, we need to make sure that it's, you know, active learning, activity-based, as you're, you know, I, some of the teachers said, listen, I'm already on two committees, I can't be on another science committee, but my one piece of advice is that, whatever you do, make sure it's, it's active learning, because these kids love science, and we really want to foster that throughout their, their schooling, so that's something that we're, we're gonna plan on doing.
Yeah, I, I think it's really important, and even at the high school, I, I think sometimes more detailed electives, i.e. Electronics 101, where you're literally learning the technology of base electronics, not just at 40,000 feet, I'm talking about base electronics, how resistors work, how capacitors work, how inductors work, and, and how circuitry is put together. I think it's extremely important, because when that's done at, like, the sophomore level, you're gonna get kids that are just gonna be really excited, when, when they get to become juniors and seniors, getting into other, you know, fields, that I think are extremely, extremely important. I mean, we have some really bright kids in the school, and we've, we've put kids into MIT, and into other universities, Stanford as well, but that's, that's where it is, that's where it has to be, you have to start it in the middle schools. You have to start it in the middle schools, to really, really, it's one of the things that, I know we've talked about this over the years, about, you know, developing the middle school program and really, really pushing it, but it's got to happen there. It's got to happen, you know, whatever we have to do.
I completely agree, and I think the science department as a whole is, does a very nice job of always, not standing still. I know last year, they developed, and this is the first year ever, the biotechnology course at the high school, taught by Mr. Atchison, that has got phenomenal reviews. I've actually been in that class a couple of times, been very impressed, the students seem to love it. Next year, which isn't necessarily in the science, but it's in the computer science, we're adding another programming course in between our programming and C course that we have.
Cyber, forensics, I mean, all that.
Yeah, and so we are continuing to grow, and I fully agree with your sentiments and all the sentiments here, that, you know, we can't, we can't just stay still, we've got to be cutting edge to see what's the next new thing, both to keep up with the technology and what occurs, but also to keep students engaged and have the love of science and the love of math as well, both of those two.
Great, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for the presentation, that was wonderful.
Thank you very much, appreciate you guys' time.
Thanks, Matthew.
Next up on the agenda is a finance update. We have a number of things to go over here tonight. I think there'll be a review of the current FY15 situation.
Yes.
We'll also have some time to talk about the FY16 budget and the implications of full-day kindergarten. I also believe that Anne Marie Fiori has a report, is that right, on the, on some of the questions that were asked about the technology finances in the past and present. And finally, we're going to need to address the recommendations made in John Sullivan's report. So without any further ado, let's get going. Dr. Tiano?
Before I turn it over to Frank, I wanted to mention that we met as a finance subcommittee of the school committee this morning. Evelyn was not in attendance, but Barbara was gracious enough to come by and worked through, mostly talking about FY15 and where we are currently. Frank can speak to where we are in terms of FY15, and some of the issues that he had shared with you at our last meeting, and bring some more detail to that. Our FY16 budget process has been, has been quite a heavy lift, but at the same time, quite a rewarding one, and will be on time in terms of presenting to you folks at our workshop next Tuesday on the 27th. And as we mentioned, Anne Marie will share some, I asked her to put together a few slides regarding the technology piece. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Frank Infinelli.
Thank you.
Sure.
So we met this morning with the finance subcommittee, and we were talking about the FY15 report that we discussed at the last meeting, and we gave some updated information to better understand that report. As you recall, the bottom line in the report was that the amount of money that we will have at the end of the year to meet all our expenses, looks like it will fall short by some $700,000. However, we know that there is $500,000 in our circuit breaker fund, as well as $200,000 in our school choice revolving fund. We're continuing to receive money from the school choice, so that should offset that $700,000 that we're talking about. At the meeting this morning, we reviewed why there is $700,000 figure at the bottom line here. And what I mentioned, first of all, is that we met as an administrative team and spent about six or seven hours reviewing each account, and what we determined was that we needed more money in our substitute account. So we increased our substitute account, our estimate for the amount of money that we would spend throughout this fiscal year by $50,000. We also increased our legal fees account for special education expenses. And that is because there is a particular case that may come up to litigation. Our special ed pupil services director estimated that it would cost approximately $23,000 for this case, and he is hopeful that if we did spend that money and brought this case to the proper authorities, that we would be successful, and there would be some potential savings that would far offset that $23,000 investment. We talked about increasing our supply accounts. We went through as an administrative team, and we realized that there were some areas where we needed additional supplies, so we increased our supply accounts by approximately $80,000. Part of those supplies, not only educational supplies, but custodial supplies. The school district purchases their supplies on a bi-weekly or a monthly basis, so many of those supplies were not encumbered when we went around the first time and did our estimates. So we increased the supply accounts by approximately $50,000 for custodians, for custodial expenses, I should say. And that was a total of almost $80,000. We also increased our salary accounts. In going through the salary accounts, there are some salary accounts that were not encumbered. And there were some expenses that, for example, if you look at the business office expense, and you see that we have been paying for a business manager, as well as paying for my services as a business consultant, that brought that particular line to a deficit. So we increased the amount of money that we thought was necessary between now and the end of this fiscal year. In addition to that, there were some salary expenses in the student body activities, which were not encumbered for expenses for advisors, and that amounted to $108,000, which we are planning on reducing by use of the fees that we're collecting from the high school, as well as the middle school students. So that will be offset. The original estimate is $740,000. We'll be able to at least take $50,000 out of that particular account, the student fee account, and charge those expenses to that rather than the general fund. So that balance will be brought down by using that particular revolving account. We have also increased our account for contracted services by approximately $90,000. There were some expenses in contracted services that, again, were not included as original projected estimates, that we had no purchase order for, so we put those expenses, excuse me, we put those expenses in contracted services, that was approximately $91,000. In addition to all of that, which amounts to approximately $500,000, there was, there have been, I should say, over the past month, additional expenses in special education. And those are for students primarily who are already in the system, but are receiving additional services. And so over the course of a month or six weeks, we've received requests, which of course have been honored, to budget additional money for those special education students, and that amounted to $275,000. I added those numbers up after our meeting, and that's what I came up with for the amount. So all of that being said, that, those are the major highlighted areas of where we are anticipating increases that were not built into the original estimate that was provided a couple of months ago. I'd be happy to take any questions.
I have a question about that student activity, and that is, that account is confusing for some people, because that is not the account that holds the monies that the teams and clubs raise for fundraisers.
That's correct.
Although, those are also called student activity accounts.
They are.
Okay. So this account, you said, has $700,000, which is fees that the students pay to play a sport or to participate in a club. Is that correct?
If I said $700,000, I didn't mean to say $700,000.
Okay, good.
So what happens is that...
Inside my head was spinning.
Okay. So what happens is that there is an account in the general fund for paying your advisors, as well as some supplies or contracted services for student body activities. And there is also a separate fund. There are three separate funds when you talk about student activities. There is first the fund which has all the clubs, and students are going out and doing fundraising, for example. And those are the reports that you're going to start receiving. You received the high school report at one of your previous meetings. That's one fund, right there. Then you have the second fund that had been co-mingled previously, and we're breaking that away, and that is your student body activity fees that you're receiving from high school students, as well as middle school students. And those are the fees that they pay to participate in athletics, as well as other student body activities. So those fees and that second revolving account will be used to offset the advisor fees that were paid from the general fund. So those are your three funds, the general fund, your student body activity fees that you're receiving from, for athletics, as, well, athletics is going separately, but for the student body activities, and your student activity accounts, your clubs that the students are going out and fundraising for.
Okay, so I'm going to refer to the one fund, is the fundraising fund.
Okay.
The student activity funds, are they also used to pay coach stipends or salaries? I don't know how we refer to those.
Yes.
And is general fund money also added to that?
Yes, because you can't pay for all of those expenses with the fees that you're getting.
Okay.
But when they're paying, when the students are paying to participate in athletics, for example, then those funds, some of those funds are being used to pay for coaches.
Okay. And how much approximately do we bring in annually for sports and club fees?
I want to defer that question, if I may.
Sure.
For four or five days.
Okay.
Because that's when I'm going to be presenting the summary of all your fees.
Fair.
And I really have not gone over that in detail as yet, so I want to defer that just for a few more days, so that it will be presented at the budget hearing next Tuesday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions about FY15?
So as we go, as we move forward here, I just want to make sure, you're essentially suggesting we're going to zero at school choice again this year?
Yes.
Well, that's what we figured we were going to do. Remember at town meeting, right, we had this long discussion, matter of fact, we talked about this this morning, and I was going to bring it up again, but I just didn't want to hear myself again, but no, I guess I'm going to have to. We said at town meeting that the reason why we wanted to keep that money sitting there and was reserved, because we knew we were going to need it. We knew we were going to need it, because there were some folks that were, you know, expressing, rightfully so, they were expressing, you know, run it down to zero, so you guys can draw less. But, you know, Frank made his, you know, pitch at that point, which was absolutely correct, that, you know, you don't have a real number, there's a lot of items that are going to be moving around, and this is still going to flow. This is not, it's going to go down, it's going to go up, it's going to go down from now throughout the year, because there's things that just happen in the account. So we knew that it was going to, it was going to happen, and, you know, that's why when we were having our discussion about kindergarten back a month and a half ago, maybe, you heard my comment, don't count on that 215, because that's in reserve, as far as I'm concerned. That's in reserve for this year. Has to be.
Okay. Okay. Well, I think that brings us quite nicely to FY16 and full-day kindergarten.
Just in terms of talking about FY16, we have, you know, again, we've been moving through the budget process, and we've outlined for you that new process. One of, one of the, and we discussed this early in the meeting, that this committee had asked us to apply for the transition to full-day kindergarten grant, and we did earn that for $122,937. And this committee had asked us, what does that look like, even though we were in a financial situation? What does that look like? What could we put together so that we could attain our goal of full-day kindergarten next year in the FY16 school year? What I have for you, and we will talk more about this next week as part of an entire budget package, but you have a sheet in front of you that lists out some of the costs of full-day kindergarten. If you recall, our first, we had our full-day kindergarten committee together, we'd gone through the research in the different iterations, and looked at other school districts, and looked at our spacing needs to see what we could put together that would accommodate the school committee's goal of providing full-day kindergarten for all of our kindergarten students at no cost to our families and parents. And we had come forth with a plan regarding using the community education building as a early childhood center, involving preschool and other full-day kindergarten classrooms there. Then the committee had asked us to come back in terms of looking at kindergarten for a fee, and we decided the timing was not right for that, and also, too, the committee did not have an appetite for that as well. As we had started over the summer, in gearing up for the school year for full-day kindergarten, we'd spent a lot of time over the summer and over the fall in terms of looking at other potential options. As our timeline has been truncated, as we focused our time for the last few months on our financial issues and looking at the date of January now, we had, Lynda and I, and Anne Marie and our team have been working with our elementary administrators in terms of looking at the available money and potentially what we could do for next year. As we look at the years going forward, next year we'll be negotiating three contracts. You can make an excuse every year to say this is not the year to do this. Given our situation, what you have in front of you is our, what we could possibly do if everything fell into place. Our proposal would be to add additional kindergarten classrooms to our existing four elementary schools for the short term, for next year FY16. Some of our schools, for example, we added a kindergarten classroom to the Harrington this year due to an increase in enrollment. What that would do, our elementary schools have had much higher populations. Our Harrington right now has about 480. About five, six years ago, they had somewhere in the 560s. Our schools can expand and reduce. However, what would be lost is you have services, for example, you have reading teachers that are in larger classrooms, that they would have to be combined, which they've done in the past, and they do in other schools right now. Potentially, you could look at some of our smaller schools and see for a year or two music that may be displaced from a classroom, and have music on the stage or in, or in the regular ed classrooms. That, and talking with our folks who've been at the elementary level, who have had, you know, the South Row School at 550 kids, and remember "Ard on a Cart," and music on the stage and so forth. Not ideal in terms of what we provide, but again, coming down to priorities and so forth. We have, so we've talked about this as an elementary council, and if the money worked out, you know, could we do this for the short term? Absolutely, in terms of what that looks like, and to start our full-day kindergarten program going forward. The, the cost of that, and we're talking just FY16, you have before you. It is, overall, it would be a cost of, you'd be looking at, for our general fund budget, And that, that money would be offset by, for this fiscal year 15, by the $122,937. That would offset one-time purchases like furniture, curriculum and assessment, technology, and the transition piece in terms of what's required by the grant for, you know, working with our staff for professional development. with our staff for professional development curriculum and coordination of that programming. So what you would see going across is for the FY '16 budget, that would be $486,385 for staffing and additionally, an additional $2,000 for technology for what we believe a total of $488,000 roughly. When you look at the potential funding for this down below, you see $122,000 for FY '15 one-time purchases. In FY '16, what we are, what we would be counting on, but we don't know for sure, are two things. One, we talked about the quality full day kindergarten grant as a recurring grant. Other districts in the Commonwealth who have received the transition grant typically receive the same amount of dollars going forward for at least the next several years in terms of the implementation of kindergarten. So we would count on, but there's no guarantee, an additional $122, almost $123,000 going forward from the state. Also, looking at this, counting on school choice money for next year, I know we would utilize our money for this year, but for next year, a total of $215,000 in school choice. So you'd be looking at one-time monies for FY '16 of $337,000. With the numbers from above, the $488,000 minus the one-time monies, we would call that a general fund budget enhancement of roughly $151,000. Now, that piece of it, of course, and we've talked about this in the past, does not include the total cost for potential benefits for staff members. And that is, that obviously is an additional cost. That is something that would not be in our general fund, but we charge back to us in the overall cost to the town. And that number that I have there is $140,000, would actually be $220,000. That is a, is a misprint for you there. So that would bring our total for the town by $371,000, or 371,043. Now, as we've discussed in the past, when we came up with our original plan, as we designed it from, you know, it was a qualitative study, building up what would be best case scenario, we had a kindergarten aid in every single classroom. This is a watered-down version of that in terms of providing one kindergarten aid per building, and then with the idea of coming in with a program and then looking to build upon that going forward. This is, this is what we figured, given the money's available, the grant, the timeline that the school committee has asked us for, and this, we believe, would be our best shot. And again, this is a preview to talk about this for next week with the budget, but I felt that this would be something that you would want to have a standalone conversation.
So you said the benefits cost is not 140, it's 220?
220.
And it's 11 staffers?
It would be 11 staffers. And that's where, that number just didn't carry over.
And what does that do to the staffing costs? Because it looks like that staffing number is 69, 69,500 times seven. That's a, that's close to the average salary, a little bit below, but if you do, if you go by 11, it's going to be, it looks like it'll be awfully low.
Right. What you have, and you don't have the breakout sheet there, Mike, is-
Oh, you've got the aides.
Right. You have four aides at $22,000 apiece. We have 7.5 licensed teachers at $47,000 apiece for a total of $352,500. And within doing that and talking with our elementary folks, additional hours for our recess aides in terms of providing an extra 30 minutes a day for them at the elementary level to add an additional lunch. And that total essentially comes out to about $27,000.
So that 486 includes the $27,000 for the, for the playground and lunch?
Yes.
As well as the four aides? Then what are we paying our kindergarten teachers?
Forty-seven. You know, if we went a master-
That's, that's very low in terms of what we pay our teachers. Are they all, like, first year?
Well, that's what we would look at in terms of, we would be hiring these folks.
No, for a full day?
For a full day teacher. Masters, masters-level teacher.
Frank, I have a quick question.
Sure.
I can see your numbers flowing all the way down, and then you lose me-
Yeah.
-at potential cost benefits.
Yes.
Now, that $20,000, is that the number that Paul told us is 20 or is it 18?
That, in the past, has been 18. I rounded it up to 20 just to, you know, create a buffer there.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure. So you just rounded it up to 20?
I did.
Okay, so, and that number isn't a seven, it's 11?
Exactly.
Okay, so-
And that total's $220,000.
Okay, so you get 220 plus the 291? Down below?
Plus the 150.
What's the total cost for FY '16?
$371,043.
Yeah, I got that written down, but I can't-
And that's assuming that we are able to utilize the school choice and that we receive the recurring grant for $123,000.
This number is these two, so this minus this you got here.
Okay.
All right. All right. So that's 371,043.
All right. Just wanted to make sure.
We are on double count.
And we had a meeting with North Running Transportation on Friday, so we were putting these numbers together to look at if there were a cost savings, cost benefit. And we believe there would be a slight cost benefit because you would be removing all your midday runs in terms of, in terms of, you know, cost per bus and driver and labor, and potentially adding a bus or two, you know, with the additional kindergarten kids riding in the morning and the afternoon, depending on the neighborhoods. And that may be at the Harrington School or the South Row or the Byham, depending on, they're looking at the previous ones.
And that's true, as long as we stay at the four existing elementary schools.
Yes.
If we had to add additional routes to go back and forth to the Westlands, then-
It would have been.
-that's another place that the numbers would go up.
Right.
So that's, the plan is basically to stay at the elementary schools now?
And that's, that's for right now for FY '16 in terms of what that looks like. For, for us going out a year, you would have schools that are disproportionate. Our Harrington School is growing at a rate that are, is higher than, for example, our South Row. So we may take a look at it as a district in terms of looking at possibly redistricting. I know, but to see what, to see what you could do there or-
No, I know.
Or also, too, looking at either providing relief or looking at our town in totality. So we've looked at, again, you know, with that, with that hybrid model, Nick, you threw out last year in terms of reopening the Westland School as a school and then building a capacity there amongst our elementary schools in terms of, for the next, you know, 20 years, they could, they could expand and reduce and still have room for all of our kindergarten classes and all of our, all of our students. But that, we would not be prepared to talk about year two right now as the impact that that would have on community education or a CHIPS program, and that's something that we would have to plan out.
Yeah, because then, because then that eliminates a revenue source as well for community ed group.
It eliminates some revenue source also, too, to bring a school back online.
Right.
You know, there are costs, there are costs involved with that. You know, again, you know, we've looked at this, you know, six ways to Sunday in terms of how to, how to have full day kindergarten in our schools. And, you know, we believe that we could provide them within the existing schools next year, again, with some difficult choices to make in some areas. And that's-
I, I, I think all of you know what, where my stance is. I mean, I'm a, I consider myself a pretty big proponent of full day kindergarten, but, but to be honest with you, in light of everything that's going on, everything that's going on, fiduciary issues, we got it, we have to be very aware because there's, there's some unknowns for '17. Too many unknowns, okay? And we still have some unknowns going forward into '16.
Absolutely.
For, for us to really embark on this, I think is irresponsible. Even though I want it, believe me, I am, I, I want to see full day kindergarten. I mean, my kids will be long gone before it goes into play, but, but, but I think it's important for the school district. And, but in the light of everything that's going on, I just, I, to be honest, I just can't support it. I just can't. I know it sounds sad and I know there's some people are going to be upset with me, but it's, you just can't do it. You just, there's too much uncertainty in '16 and, and also in '17. And you got to look at the long range.
Yeah.
Can't put yourself in trouble. That's my opinion.
Other thoughts or questions?
Couple of requests. One, I would like to request that this document be placed online since we couldn't project it. I think people would like to see it at home. I'd also like to request that this information be broken out a little bit more. You know, some of these are one-time costs, some of these are sustaining costs, you know, I, I just want it broken down.
Sure.
More detail. And if you could post that as well, as, as for anything that's presented tonight, you know, I think the people who are watching, since this is the new show, we post everything.
No, every presentation we have-
Okay.
-is online. And this is more of an overview for you folks-
Oh, yeah.
-before we come in, you know, with the budget meeting last, next Tuesday. But felt that, you know, as Mike and I discussed topics, it'd be a good one to break out in a little more detail.
I need something to do on a Friday night, you know? Go over spreadsheets.
I have some for you.
Thank you.
Al, thoughts, questions?
I'm not going to comment about a position until I see how this fits into the whole, the whole package next week. I know. I heard the town manager's report, like all of you did.
And the governor just put out a report that the deficit is now 785 or 95 million. So what is that? 65, 765 million. Thank you.
Yeah, let's, let's not be overly dramatic.
I'm sorry. So that's up quite a bit from the former governor's projections. So I'm not thinking state aid's going to go up very much.
Yeah, I guess my point to, just before, Al, and I understand where you're coming from, and I can easily say, yep, I'm going to put the thought process off, but in, in light of looking at FY '15 and looking at our, our needs budget, that's level service, and knowing what's going to be in, I speculate what's going to be in '16's budget, no way that's going to fit. There's just no way. And I'm just spec, total speculation, but I can almost-
You may be right. I just wait and see.
Yeah, to talk about FY '16 a little bit and how this fits into it, I believe it was the town manager who speculated that we were looking at something like $1.2 million in step and salary increase costs. Do you have a sense of that, Frank?
Nope, but I'll be sharing it with you all.
You will next year, or next week. That number doesn't strike me as wildly out of touch.
It isn't at all.
If that's, if that's close to right, then the 371, if you figure a $1.5 million increase is something like a 3% increase, which seemed to be what the town manager was hinting at, there's no, there isn't room for this there. If you go to a 3.7% increase, which the town manager had been discussing in September before a number of things changed, even that's only about 1.85 million. So that's, you maybe could squeeze it in with a 3.7% increase, but it doesn't, I know, it doesn't, there's an awful lot of, awful lot of things that got to go just right. I'm concerned that we're paying the, the minimum or calculating the minimum for the, for the kindergarten teachers. It means that number's going to inflate faster than the rest of the budget as, as they see both cost of living and step increases. I'm concerned that we're, that if we have to change transportation to include another school, that number, that number is likely to go up. I'm a little worried that the one aid per building may, may not really be sufficient. I mean, that's something, I, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. But it certainly at least exposes us to the risk of, of future increases there. And I'm really not, I'm, I'm pretty uncomfortable that we're going from spending all of our school choice money the last couple of years to spending it all on, on kindergarten here. And, and I guess I'm, I'm also a little concerned about getting that sustaining grant, although it sounds like that's, that's not out of the question, really.
I guess where you're missing off to, Michael, as well, is assuming that, what if, let's say Paul couldn't give us the 1.2, just, we know what it's going to be increased anyway, but assume it's 1.2. What I'm trying to say is that when these two gentlemen and their teams come to us in a week and a half-
Yeah.
-with their plan, even without that increase, I'm telling you-
Yeah.
-that it's going to be-
Well, I think we need to talk a little bit about what we'd like to see next Tuesday.
I had spoken with the superintendent last week and kind of laid out a scenario where he'd bring three separate budgets forward for us to look at. A 3% increase, which seems to be what the town manager is offering these days, a 3.7% increase, which is what he was offering in September, and presumably that would be sufficient to include full day kindergarten, and a, and a full needs, level service, needs-based budget. Whatever that number turns out to be, whether it turns out to be 1% or 5%, we have to have that discussion. I think we still need the level service, full needs budget. I, I think we need to bring a 3% budget forward because that, that's the guidance we're getting from the town. I guess, in my mind, the question is, is it even worth asking them to bring forward a 3.7% increase budget?
Well, as we talked to Mike, one of, one of the things that we're looking to do is, is to bring the new baseline in terms of what it costs to run Chelmsford Public Schools. So once we have, have that particular piece, even if we provide the numbers for level service for exactly what we're doing this year, we're not sure of what the percentage increase is going to be based on what our number was last year. So that's, you know, as we're digging down and finalizing that this week, you know, we're going to come up with that, with that new baseline from which we're going to work on percentages going forward. But we can, but we can, you know, we can look at that in terms of, once we come up with that number, and then work on the percentages from there.
Michael, you're falling back into the trap. I'm falling back, of just going with the percentage.
Backing into the-
Don't, don't, don't-
I think we need to, I think we need to be prepared to have a conversation-
Correct.
-of what it looks like if we have to go with what the town manager offered us at the tri-board meeting last Monday, which appeared to be about a 3% increase.
Two tri-board meetings prior, everyone sat around the table, and we all agreed that we needed to put together a budget of what it costs to run the Chelmsford Public Schools.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
And that's why we're bringing forward-
And we may look at that budget-
A needs-based budget.
Right. And, and we may look at that budget, and Paul may say, we can't afford that. At that point, I think we need to start working backwards quickly. But, but until then, we need to find out, if you present three budgets, you know which one's going to get selected? The cheapest one.
No, 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 I'm not-
I'm telling you.
It's, it's still up to us to make these choices. But I, what I heard from the town manager last Monday was that he's concerned about the window of time that we have to work with.
Correct.
And he's, and I think legitimately concerned, we don't have time to go back and forth three or four times.
We're going to have to. We have to. We have no choice.
If we have the, if, if, if the leadership team here is ready to bring forward a 3% budget, I think that would help facilitate the discussion about what, what it would look like if we had to, if we had to live with that.
The 3% increase on what number?
Well, that's a good question because I think one of the things that's changed since September is that, is that we know that the utilities costs have not behaved the way they were projected to behave. First of all, we were going to have electricity flowing from the solar arrays. Now, for reasons that, that are clear to me, we are going to send that energy elsewhere because it works out better for the town. That's fine, but it means that the energy savings that we were projecting there have not materialized. In addition, in something that's a little less clear to me, we don't seem to be seeing reductions in energy usage at a couple of buildings. That, to me, that's the biggest unknown in the, in the budget. Because we're, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars there, and I don't, I don't know- Cause we're, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars there, and I don't, I don't know exactly how we're gonna, how we're gonna go ahead with that. It's, it's pretty clear to me that the base budget should not be fifty million, that it needs to be more like.
First of all, the base budget is not fifty million, the base budget is fifty-nine million. I mean, fifty point.
Fifty, fifty million and point nine.
Fifty point nine. And on top of that.
Well.
The additional.
That has some, now wait, that has some costs that should have legitimately been in FY fourteen.
No.
Yes, they've come, they were paid in FY fifteen, and I, and I'm not convinced those should be part of the base going forward.
I would agree, but it wasn't part of, it wasn't part of the, the, the number that's in there is actually fifteen's number, period. What I'm saying is this, the, the real number, if you're gonna go to just three percent or whatever percentage number is gonna be, that number's gotta be somewhere around fifty and, fifty-one and a half, roughly. I'm just, just rounding up.
For FY sixteen, you're saying?
No, that's, that's just starting, fifty-one and a half, and then plus three percent.
Really?
Look at the numbers. Am I lying?
Well, that, no, that's a.
Let Frank speak.
My recommendation to the school board would be that the administration continue to work on the budget as we have been. Prepare the final document, present it on Tuesday, and after the school committee reviews that budget on Tuesday, that the committee take a vote to adopt a quote preliminary budget, so that you can give the number to the town manager the very next day. In fact, the town manager, I'm sure, will be in the audience that night. And then meet with various administrators to review the details of your budget in order to make reductions, if you need to make reductions. At this point, it would be, I'm gonna say, impossible to come up with three scenarios by next Tuesday to give you, for your contemplation.
Okay, yeah, if it can't be done, then, then let's focus on what can be done.
Okay.
All right, well, we may have to schedule a couple more meetings then.
Kevin, can I have a point of order, please? I, the conversations I've had with Paul, his concept of what, what the budget should be, what the budget was last year, which was fifty million dollars.
I, all right, that.
I don't believe the nine, nine hundred thousand dollars.
I, I think that's, that goes beyond, I think that goes beyond a point of order. And, and we'll, we are gonna take this into account. This is not going to be a single meeting, clearly. What we're hearing is that we're going to have to have more meetings perhaps than we had contemplated initially. I'm, I am, I'm trying to listen to what the town manager says when he tells me that one of the things that has changed, which he said at the tri-board meeting, is that he's not willing to bring an unbalanced budget forward in, in April anymore. I take that very seriously, and I understand that that's, that the three point seven percent increase, no matter what base you calculate it on, doesn't look like it's there for us right now. So, the question is, how do we go forward with this? And what, what our business consultant is telling us is that the capabilities of, of the district right now are to bring forward a single budget next Tuesday, which we've requested that they do. A level service, needs-based budget, without trying to shoehorn it into any number. We're just gonna take the number, we'll take a look at it. If that number happens to be larger than, than a, than something like a three percent increase, we're going to have to have additional meetings, and we're going to have to do them fairly quickly to help, to, to facilitate the, the town budget process. We are required by charter to deliver a preliminary budget to the town manager ninety days before the budget is due. We're gonna do that on the twenty-seventh. If it doesn't fit with the rest of the budget, we're going to have to take action to help bring it into line.
One of, one of the first recommendations I would make, and, and I don't know how easy it would be to do this, is this is separated out. As a separate line.
It will be. And that was our plan. And, and that was our plan all, all along, Mike, too.
Yep.
In terms of, in terms of putting our budget together, you know, we're piecing together and untangling a, a, a lot of different line items from within our budget. So, being able to put together a, a line item budget has, has taken some time to be able to do that. And our charge has been to our administrators to provide that, you know, what do you, a needs-based budget, what it costs to run the McCarthy School as a cost center, and be able to bring that to you folks and provide you with what we feel we need to operate next year on a level service basis. And then, as, as you folks vote on a preliminary budget, we would immediately talk and talk about priorities of the school district and so forth. But absence that information, you folks would have a hard time making some decisions. And that's been our charge.
Okay. Anything else on FY sixteen or full day kindergarten?
Technology? I'd asked Anne Marie to put together just a few slides regarding technology. I know some information was brought up to the budget, I, I'm sorry, in the audit, as well as ask some questions, too. So, I asked her to put together just a couple of slides for you. You know, this'll be online after this as well, and let her, and let her walk you through, should, should take a few minutes.
It's a little more than a few slides. Budget questions that I had at the last meeting, it's hard to answer them without fully understanding the context in which the budget had been created, and to really understand where we started in 2010 and where we are now. So, we're gonna have a little, little history. August twenty-fourth, 2010 was my first school committee meeting. I was working here for three weeks when I had to prepare for the school committee presentation, kind of a state-of-the-state thing. Here is actually one of the slides that I used in that presentation, and what it shows, showed was sixty-nine point four percent of existing computers are five years or older. If you know anything about PCs, they have a shelf life of about four to five years, unless you really baby them and take care of them, which was not happening here in Chelmsford. So, we were looking at seventy percent of the computers in their sixth year, which is over their life expectancy, because they weren't properly maintained, re-imaged, added RAM, new hard drives. Yeah.
Two-thirds of the computers at the high school were literally useless.
So, when I got here, what we did was, we did the step-down, the step-down plan. I always use the refrigerators as kind of a, a thing. So, you have a refrigerator in your kitchen, you love it, it's been your friend for fifteen years, oh my God, isn't it wonderful? And then you decide one day, well, you know, I'd like one to have the water in the door. But you can't get rid of your old refrigerator because it's just still working well, so you put it down in the basement. Maybe it becomes like a beverage refrigerator. Similarly, this is what we did to the computers. We stepped them down every two years in duty, heavy duty, medium, light duty, then they go into spare status. It's important with anyone in the school department, if they're down and out their computer, toasted out during the day, we gotta get a spare right in and replace it. Then they go into part status, we take off all the pieces that are usable, and that we use for our preventative maintenance. Our preventative maintenance is re-imaging the computers, adding RAM, changing graphic cards, changing hard drives. So, now, if you do the step-down, computers which only would have lasted four to five years can now be easily nine to ten years. Granted, in the last year of their life, they're for parts, but that's how, that's how we do preventative maintenance. In August 2010, we were looking at, we were looking at a lot of network issues. The biggest was, the town and the schools were running separate networks on one physical network. I always use the analogy of the china plate. So, if you have a china plate and you crack, it cracks in the middle for some reason, what have you done? You've weakened the plate. And that's what's essentially what was happening here. So, the town and the school was using fifty percent of the available bandwidth, and it's just not a good model. Basically, and Chelmsford was very forward-thinking in terms of the fiber run between all of the buildings and the schools. And in that fiber run, that was, that was honestly the best thing that could have happened. But you can't then take the network and split it in two, it has to be one network. The second issue was, we had a, a lot of appliances connected to the network. Those appliances did stuff like monitored software, monitor users, monitor this, monitor that. What those pieces of software do is essentially, they just grind your network to a halt. Another type of appliance we had on the network was called a network load balancer, where if you're sitting at your desk and you wanna go to X-two, it's gonna say, yep, go to X-two, go this way. You wanna go check your mail, okay, you gotta check, go this way. Oh, you gotta do something else, you gotta go that way. So, it's constantly reading and routing and putting you in all different parts of the, of the pipe, so to speak, where the fiber was robust not to have that kind of a system. We had residential modems in all school buildings except for CHS, so picture it. There's four hundred and eighty-odd kids at Harrington, and they were using, to go out to the internet, the same modem that's in your house. So, that's not good. We had Pine Mail, which was a mail created in nineteen eighty-nine, and it was, I have to say, it was the, the worst thing to get used to when I first got here, because it was so hard to use. And the worst part of it was, it ran on eleven servers, and they were hot. When I was cold in the morning, I used to go put my hands behind it, I swear it was like a fireplace, those servers. And then we were still on Microsoft ninety-seven, for the most part. Administrators and their secretaries had two thousand and three. Of course, by 2010, we were already on 2010 in Microsoft world, but not in Chelmsford, we weren't there. Some other issues were, the Twenty-First Century Classroom Initiative had started. Teachers were very excitingly taking the UDL course, Universal Design for Learning. They were all excited, they wanted to get, there's technology components that go in the room, very much like what's in this room. A projector, ceiling mounted speakers, and we don't have an interactive whiteboard, but they have an interactive whiteboard. I came into forty rooms behind, so they were fifty-five hundred dollars per room. And it's horrid to think that somebody's gonna take a course and then wait for two years for the stuff. The curriculum part of it, they were implementing, but they didn't have the technology component in their rooms. In my heart of hearts, you can't, you can't ask somebody to take a class and then wait two years for the stuff. It's just, it's just wrong. When I first got here, the student computers, the state, the ratio was five to one. The state average at that time was three point three to one. You always benchmark on the state, so you wanna be at the state or better than the state. We were, as you can see, five to one. Another problem was, there were no student computers in the elementary schools. The DESE recommends three per room. CH Labs were among the oldest PCs in the district, as you saw on that other slide. And again, another, high school kids are doing high-level things, they're making PowerPoints, they're doing Excel, they're doing other computer work, and the computers were really, they were average at Chelmsford High School at that time, seven to eight years old. So, they were definitely on their last legs. And last but not least, some department had, some departments had no computers at all. And that was because if you were in technology in the, in the nineties, when schools started to get computers, classroom teachers got them, specialist teachers often didn't, and here's the reason why. Classroom teachers got them because, well, they had to take attendance. So, the music teacher didn't need a computer, the art teacher didn't need a computer, the phys ed teacher didn't need a computer. So, that's another thing that we were at. A lot of those departments had no computers, and if they did, it was only because the building technician felt sorry for them and kinda cobbled some older computer together for them. So, they were also in a very desperate situation. So, here was our needs list in Chelmsford in 2010. The phones were the original infrastructure in the buildings from when the building was built. So, say Biim, I think it's nineteen seventy-two, original equipment. The phones themselves had been changed, but the wiring and everything in the building. So, we're looking at about, what, fifty years, right? Forty, fifty years. We didn't have wireless. One day I went up to Chelmsford High School, I was in the professional development technology lab, and one of the football players came in to get his password changed for X-two, and he said to me, are you the director of technology? I said, yes. And he said, you know, out of our whole, I don't know what it's called, you know when the football players play, league, conference, whatever it's called? He said, we're the only school without wireless. As if I wasn't already embarrassed enough about it. We had no security cameras. I already did security cameras in two other school districts before I got here. I completed wireless at two other school districts before I got here. I completed phones in one district before I got here. Not saying that to be obnoxious, just trying to give you an, an essence of how far we were behind. Keyless entry, nothing. Virtualization was started, but it was at the very, very, very infancy. We had no work order ticket system, so it was that constant being on the phone. The boys bathroom in McCarthy upstairs, it was that constant thing, we had no ticket system. Lunch tickets, old-fashioned blue tickets, yellow tickets, pink tickets, whatever they were. We didn't have a cafeteria point-of-sale system. Also, we did not have a comprehensive firewall, and by comprehensive firewall, I mean, one that handles the whole district. So, each school and location, including central office, had its own, what I used to call the toy firewalls, because they were so remedial, they didn't do the things that are CIPRA compliant. When you apply for E-rate funding, you have to check off the box that you have a CIPRA compliant firewall, and we did not. That had to be addressed. Now, we have a robust firewall that handles the town, the public library, the schools, handles the whole shoot-and-match. I had one month to get up a new website with a content management system. We were in desperate need of computers. A lot of the curriculum at that time started to become online curriculum and not so much per, you know, unit installation. We really started to look at online instead of per installation, or running the things off CDs, which was happening in a lot of rooms. I told you about the Twenty-First Century Classroom, we had no online payment option, and C-network issues was a previous slide. So, in FY eleven and FY twelve, the work had really started. Here's an actual slide from the school committee presentation, August 2012. I always go on the second Tuesday of the month. And we started to really make some gains in student-to-computer ratio. To think that Biim at one point had seven point nine students for every one computer is ludicrous. That was basically because there were no, there were no computers in the classrooms. So, we started to make some headway there. We started to look at all the, we started to, I went through with the department coordinators, a lot of the curriculum software, transitioning it from CD or per-computer installation to online. The capital thankfully now had started in FY eleven and FY twelve, phones, cameras, wireless computers, all the things that we're still kind of buying, although a lot of our projects have come to an end. The biggest thing really was, the network was being reconfigured by myself, Bill O'Rourke, the previous network administrator, and Ted Luder on the town side, the MS, MIS director for the town of Chelmsford. I estimated that it would take us three to five years, that's how much work needed to be done on the network. And it wasn't really like something where you could just say, hey, can you come help us do this? We had to do it because we knew, and we had to extract all these appliances, extract all the mistakes, put the network back together with routing, proper routing. So, we used to just hang out here Friday after school, sometimes till eleven, twelve o'clock in the morn, you know, twelve o'clock in the morning, just do the work, I mean, that's what we did. Then park was looming on the horizon, and that, of course, before we actually did park, was terrifying, I have to be honest. We had to make sure we had enough computing devices, and the other thing that had come in big in 2011 was iPads. iPads colloquially were in people's houses in 2010. They, people started to realize they had great educational value. I think two billion were sold, were sold in eleven and twelve. I hesitated on buying them because I'm never one for a fad, and I was afraid. There were many tech directors in Massachusetts who got burned by the Palm Pilot fad and spent gazillion dollars on Palm Pilots, and where are they now? I can tell you where they are, they're in people's closets. If you open the closets, all the stuff will come falling down on your head. So, I held off on the iPads a little bit, and then people started to ask me, oh, can I bring my personal iPad to school? Sure, you can bring your personal iPad to school, but we don't have wireless yet. So, that was another, that was another thing. FY thirteen, we really started to make some real headway. This is a slide actually from 2013, where Bill and Ted and I, our excellent adventure was, we put all these things back together and expanded them. Firewall, email, data storage, virtual environment, network routing, internet connection, security cameras, wireless, and disaster recovery, combined forces, bought, bought better items, and we actually got that three-to-five-year scope of work done in two years, because we just got obsessed with it and we had to finish it, basically. In 2013, we also put in Project Lead the Way. We went from that technical ed class in middle school, seventh and eighth grade, which was very much that building with things out of cardboard and, you know, balsa wood and that type of thing, which is great, but we decided to kick it up a level to technology engineering. Project Lead the Way, the whole thing about it is the spirit of innovation and invention, that old Steve Jobs quote, "Think differently," that kind of really describes Project Lead the Way. We, Project Lead the Way came about because corporate was, was saying to colleges, give us more engineering students, math students, science students, technology students. We, um, Project Lead the Way came about because corporate was, was saying to colleges, "Give us more engineering students, math students, science students, technology students." Colleges then clamored to K-12 districts, "Give us some more, you know, engineering students, science, tech, technology, math." So we took that over into our department, uh, just the middle school component, not the high school. And the kids embark on, uh, design and modeling, which is they learn the three D software and, um, AutoCAD, Autodesk, AutoInventor, that's among their softwares. Very expensive software, by the way. Fortunately now, it's free. It's part of that Connect Ed initiative that Dr. Tiana went to the White House for, is that they give us that software for free now, which is fantastic. Uh, their eighth grade experiences, robotics and automation, they're building things like robotic arms and all kinds of different things. Also, this year, we got a three, a three M grant for three D printers. Uh, so that was welcome. So our student computer ratio held at two point seven students to every one computer. We upgraded the curriculum software for the most part to an online format. By now, we had adopted Meal Magic. By now, we had installed and are, we're using School Dude. We adopted the curricular, curriculum and learning tools of X two, our student information system, and we were also in the Park Pilot. This was the town manager's end of year report, which of course was derived from numbers that came from the DESE website. The D, the DESE website had wrong numbers for us. It wasn't...
But they were our number...
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Numbers, so we can't blame anybody ourselves.
The DESE, it was all our fault, yes. Um, basically, what happened on this was, things were reported as instructional technology that were not. So if I took in account everything, this was actually the chart. And we were kind of towards the top, it's kind of in the middle of those comparable towns. This is a list of items. I know it's hard to read. I'll put this on the website, that were misreported in E O Y. It's basically a matter of, there are things that run the network, they're not instructional. There are databases we use, they're not instructional. Everything was reported as instructional. The audit showed that salaries were, uh, wrong in technology, and that was true. We had a classroom teacher paid from the technician line, which of course shouldn't have happened. The salaries didn't skyrocket, the person was misclassed. And, uh, the technology equipment, how that worked was Kathy would say to me, you know, "I have thirty thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars surplus monies at the end of the year." And then, um, she would let me go below my lines, which made us seem like we were running in the red. And I said to her, "You don't like this thing, we're showing like we're in the red." And she would say, "Don't worry about it, appropriate, I'll, I'll transfer the money and make it whole again." But the appropriate transfers were never done. So now, this was that list at the beginning. So the phones are complete, wireless is two schools to go, the cameras are fifty percent done. Keyless entry is twenty-five percent, it's on its way. The virtualization was started and completed. Work order ticket system, lunch POS, comprehensive firewall, we have a new website, and then we upgraded it again after that. Online curriculum, we're good with that. Twenty, Twenty First Entry Classroom is a long project. It's a, um, it's really not only a technology project, but it's a building infrastructure upgrade. Because what we're doing is, it's not only even technology. When we have to go put all these items into a classroom, their electrical gets upgraded, because, you know, we're dealing with buildings that are rather old now. And two plugs in a classroom, it's not enough. It's just not enough now. Um, we did our, we completed the online payment system, which I know Scott Moreau, um, uses a lot.
Exclusively.
Huh?
Exclusively.
Yeah, exclusively now.
You know, they don't do checks anymore, so.
And, uh, student to computer ratio, we don't record that anymore for the DESE. They, since, since the online testing came, although we're not a park district, um, we have to do the, we have to do that kind of reporting in a different way, and this is what it is. Percent of devices meeting recommended requirements, number of devices, test taking, ready, and network readiness of the school. And of course, we got a hundred on all the, uh, tests. That was the end of the park year, June, I think it was twenty-fourteen, I'm not sure. Yeah. Thank you, Linda. Um, you know, I just wanna say on a personal note, when I, when I, um, every school I've been in, every school district that I've worked in, always benchmarked itself against Chelmsford. I wasn't unhappy in the job that I had before Chelmsford, but when I saw that ad go in the paper, I jumped right on it because I thought, "That's the place I wanna work." Not technology, let's not get crazy, because the technology wasn't, um, I was about seven or eight years behind. But other things, curriculum, athletics, drama, uh, plays, musicals, the music program. And I sent many of my librarians who've worked for me in the past here to see the learning commons. Um, I thought, "That's the place I wanna be," and I really have enjoyed every minute of this.
Star Trek?
Yeah. You have any questions?
No, I, just one of the other points is, some of, some of the items that I know, I was here in two thousand nine, two thousand ten to start, and when I, and I consider myself part of the high-tech world i- in, in, in the, uh, private sector. And when I came here, I always joke about this, I've said it a couple of times, I think some of you have heard me say it. I sat to a presentation, I was sitting right there, right where Mike was sitting, because Kathy Duffett was the chair, she was sitting there. And the, uh, her predecessor did a presentation. And after it was done, I literally leaned, leaned over to Kathy and said to her, "Is he kidding me?" Because, and without, it just, it just took me back. Because it, it was like, I didn't know where we were. I was like, this is, and I have five kids and a sister, I'm going, my kids are nowhere gonna be prepared for college, not even close. It was scary. And, and where we've come from then till now is, you know, our, our whole vision of technology back then was that. That was technology. Uh, I'm, I'm telling you, that, that, Al, you were, you were, you were at the high school in two thousand and nine, right?
I've already commented.
I mean, so the point that I try to make is, the, the district, you know, with, with a lot of help from the town, believe me. They, they, they've been absolutely fantastic when it comes to capital support, um, and, and our budget. But, but as a team, the team has done an unbelievable job getting us to where we are today. Uh, I, I, I'm, I'm proud from a technology standpoint. Forget about the fact that, that, that the town received an award, the district received an award, um, and be recognized a- at the national level. Um, forget about that part. I mean, just in general, that, you know, our kids are prepared when they go off to college. I know my kids were. So, and, and I felt that in, as an overall standpoint, we've done our job from a technology standpoint, but we've shared a lot of those technologies. Like, as part of our security discussions that we've had, there were certain things that were happening during some of the, some of the drills that we did back four, five, four years ago. Uh, and we didn't even have, you know, we didn't have speakers in it, so we had to go to the voice over IP. So that's part of our, you know, our systems that, that now. So it's all part of that technology, that evolving process to get us to where we are. So people, sometimes people think that, you know, it's a computer. And that's it. Believe me, that, the computer is the smallest piece of the puzzle. There's so much more beyond that, that where we've, we've come as, as a district. So I, I've been, I, I'm proud of it. You know, we, we've done an unbelievable job, really, and your whole team should be very proud of what they did.
I, I would, I would echo that. We are where I expect us to be, technology-wise, here in Chelmsford. Um, that said, the, the E O Y fourteen report, Frank, are we...
Yes.
Are we going to have those same issues with...
Unfortunately, you're going to have those issues until, um, you're going to have some of those issues in FY fifteen. We have been changing things, but really FY sixteen is where you're going to make a big turn.
First clean year, yeah.
Because those accounts that Anne Marie was talking about, she's set them up now so that there are individual accounts for networking and telecommunications. So we had, as you recall, phone bills under the schools or under the central administration that were really for, um, our internet connections. Those are going to be under networking, telecommunications, rather than phone bills. Everyone was saying, "How could you spend so much money in the central office for those phone bills?" Well, it wasn't the central office.
All right, well, that may be something we have to continue on with. Any other comments on technology? All right. I know the hour is late, but we really do need to address, um, these recommendations in John Sullivan's report. A few of them have been taken care of. Most of them are going to be action items. Um, and I think we need to discuss what we wanna see as deliverables in many cases. On page nine, uh, the section titled Liquidated Purchase Orders, Unpaid Bills and FY fourteen Bills Paid Out of FY fifteen. Uh, Mr. Sullivan, under his recommendation, notes that the town has had a special town meeting, uh, which provided money to cover the unpaid FY fourteen bills. We also had an extended town meeting, uh, where we got an appropriation to cover the FY fourteen bills paid in FY fifteen, as well as the FY fifteen deficit. That is the one recommendation, I believe, that is complete. The next section is titled Four-Year Trend Analysis. The rec, the recommendation on page fifteen says, uh, essentially that the trend analysis should be used as a foundation for development of future budgets. Uh, it goes on to recommend that budgets be restructured, uh, into responsibility centers, uh, and that the business office continue to prepare a detailed financial report with a projection column. We are essentially doing that now. Is that correct?
We are doing that, and your FY sixteen budget will be by cost centers. So I would say that you're well on your way to checking that off.
Yes. Uh, recommendation three is a section titled School and Town Munis Records. Page sixteen, the recommendation suggests, uh, the town and school department should renew their discussion of merging transactions into a single database. The revision of the chart of accounts could also be integrated into that process. The town and school departments both, uh, also need to expand their discussion to include the impact of the school department encumbrance practices to determine if there's any undue, undue burden on the town employees. Uh, again, I believe that the, that the review of the chart of accounts is complete at this point. Is that correct?
The school accountant and I have met with the town accountant, and we have been talking about consolidating the system so that it's just one system. And, uh, the town accountant is making plans with Munis so that we can all sit down together and review all of those accounts to see whether or not it can be consolidated. I'm sure that it can be consolidated. It will be a lot of work, but everyone is eager to do that. And there's a great spirit of cooperation between the town and the school on that.
All right, so that leads us to...
Is there an estimated time to, when that'll be done by?
No, there isn't, because we have not had the meeting with Munis.
Okay.
But, uh, Darlene is planning on a meeting, uh, with them and the school department. And as soon as we get an overview from them, then I could come back to you and tell you about the estimate.
Okay, so we'll take that as an, my suggestion would be that we adopt these recommendations and then break them out into specific action items for ourselves, so that we can continue to make sure that we make progress on this. So that we would take hearing that report on the, on that meeting as an action item. And that'll give us, that'll give us a place to put a flag in. Okay, um, the next section is titled Chart of Accounts and Reporting. Page eighteen, uh, suggests that we, that the schools review account structures for DESI compliance and more comprehensive monitoring based on budget centers. As you said, this will be, this will be forthcoming in the FY sixteen budget. And I, I, again, you, you've gone through and checked for DESI compliance.
Absolutely.
Section five, Budget Entries. The recommendation is the budget only be adjusted only when programmatic changes occur. Uh, that those changes should be subject to school committee authorization, both of the change and of the funding source. Um, I, I think this is, yeah, this is one where we're gonna have to take that on directly ourselves. And, and the, the deliverable's gonna be a, a policy a lot, that, that says something along those lines. Section six, Blanket Purchase Orders. Blanket POs, the recommendation is blanket POs should match the amount expected to be expended for the year, and changes should be brought forward in a timely manner. Uh, can you tell me where we stand with, with something like that? And, and what are we doing now that we weren't doing before?
The main thing is that we've reached out to everyone to make sure that they're giving us a purchase order before they actually contact a vendor and make an order with that vendor. In addition to that, we are printing out, um, reports, they're called open purchase order reports, in which we check those balances every time we run a warrant to make sure that there aren't any purchase orders that are out there with no activity. Then we would get in touch with the, the cost centers, the people who are supervising, and make sure that those are updated. Just yesterday, I spoke with the special ed director about, uh, an account. And, and he worked to make sure that that account was just as, as it should be. So we're checking on account balances all the time.
So in terms of our action item, um, you've indicated that we will see these open PO reports...
You can see that, sure.
Along with a warrant, the sense would be to put them along with the warrants.
Exactly.
Um, would your recommendation be that that be something that go into policy? Or is that more of, uh, just kind of a daily operational...
It's a procedure that should be done.
The next section is entitled Accounting for Special Education. The recommendation on page twenty-one. Mr. Sullivan talked about this at some length, I think, during his presentations. Uh, suggests that we, that the budget column in the sped office spreadsheet be reconciled to financial records, including the general fund and circuit breaker. POs should be increased on the spreadsheet when additional costs are identified. And, uh, finally, to continue discussions with collaboratives to get timely billing and updates on additional services above those authorized in the original PO.
I can't not speak to the collaborative portion of that, but I can tell you that the special ed office is reviewing that spreadsheet. I used the example a couple of minutes ago about talking to, uh, Brad about the circuit breaker. It was actually the circuit breaker account. So we're doing that continually, and, and they are looking at their balances and making sure that the encumbrances are adjusted.
In terms of our oversight of it...
Your oversight, the school committee's oversight.
What's a reasonable level of detail there? Should we see that spreadsheet every other week? Is it enough to, is it enough to, will it come out in the budget, uh, report that you generate?
You will see, uh, in the, in the budget report, uh, that I'm generating, you will see a spreadsheet that will list all of the, uh, special education students, not by name.
I was gonna say, just by number, right?
Not by name, and it will, it will indicate the school that the students are attending, the number of days that they're going to the school, the daily rate, the extension of the daily rate. And that's really the basis of the spreadsheet that they use to compare their purchase orders with the actuals in Munis.
Okay, all right, so we'll be seeing, we'll be seeing that on a regular basis?
You're going to be seeing that in your budget document, and you're also going to be seeing, uh, monthly reports, which will include special ed, which will show what their accounts are, how much is encumbered, what the projections are.
Next section titled Grants and Revolving Funds. There's a couple of, it, it breaks down into a couple of, uh, categories here. One is the school lunch, uh, fund. It suggests that the business manager and lunch director continue to... the business manager and lunch director continue to monitor costs in the fund and take necessary corrective actions so the fund does not continue running a deficit.
I have been meeting with the lunch director on a monthly basis, sometimes more than that. She's a very capable young lady. I know that because I hired her in Bill Ricker. But she does a nice job, and we meet once a month, and we are reviewing the expenses. She has, for the first time this year, developed the actual budget for the cafeteria in the revolving account.
That's another one where we have not... We've not gotten a good look at those numbers in the past.
You will.
With... Yeah, with seeing the revolving fund account, that's one way of seeing it.
That'll be part of the budget?
Okay. The other question I have about this recommendation is, it sounds like it's saying that there should not be any appropriated money spent on the lunch, on the food services.
Well, that's the ideal situation, that you would not have any money in your general fund appropriated to your school lunch program. But some schools have a need to do that. You'll see the budget that April has prepared for next year is very responsible and optimistic that you'll be turning the corner and you won't have a deficit or a near deficit in that account. But I still think, at this point, that you need to supplant that revolving account by putting some money into the general fund.
Okay, and once again, we'll see that in the monthly report, in the appropriated budget.
Yes.
And any unexpected expenses, rather than finding out at the end of the year, this is what we're going to need to transfer in. We're going to know it as we go along.
Yes.
We'll see any changes that need to be made along the course of the year.
And that was in this report that you just received.
That's right.
Right, so just to add an information to that, BN before Nick, two years prior, there was a decision made by the school committee at the time for the lunch program to be self-sustaining. They made changes, staff was moved around. I think they did some reductions even at the elementary school. So there's a lot of things that happened. I think it was like two years prior. It was like 2008. It might have been somewhere around there. That sound right?
In the ballpark, yeah.
And the committee had decided at that point that it had to be self-sustaining, so they changed around the benefits, and they did a bunch of things. So that's why it comes out, and it comes out in this manner where it says, you know, they have to continue to review this so it doesn't run a deficit, because it's supposed to be its own cost center.
Right.
So it's really a profit and loss center.
The second part of that section discusses basically all the other revolving funds. The recommendation is that we segregate transportation, athletic, and student activity accounts on both the school and town books. The business office should also reconcile with the athletic director on a periodic basis so that he's aware of both revolving fund and appropriated balances.
I agree with that recommendation 100 percent, and Lauren, your school accountant, is working to separate those accounts that have been commingled.
So what would we see when that's done? Would we see... Is that just a notification? Would we see an actual report?
You would see a monthly report that would give you a beginning balance, as well as any revenue that has come in, and any expenses that have been made, along with the encumbrances and what your balance is.
When should that be done by?
I think that that will probably be done by the next time you get a report.
Thirty days?
Yeah, when we do this report, it'll be the same thing. You'll get this report, as well as the grants and revolving accounts.
Just looking up the date.
That's the goal. Can't wait. The final section is titled Staff in the Business Office. There are a number of recommendations there.
What page on there, Mike?
The recommendations are scattered through pages 27 to 30. They're broken down by job, essentially. There's a long list of requirements or suggestions for the business manager that I think we'll need to take as part of our consideration when we ultimately accept or reject the superintendent's recommendation for the next person to fill that role. It does note that our current consultant has many of those skills and is excellently positioned to lead us there.
But will not be applying for the position.
It didn't say anything about that in the report. I think that's going to be fairly transparent. People are going to be able to see what kind of decision we make there and match it up against those recommendations.
But I think one of the things that we need to do, if you look at the list, it goes beyond just this one person. I think what we really need to do, and we need to give Dr. Tiano an action item, that action item is, is he needs to work with human resources to develop a training profile for every person in the administration office, every single person, and list out all the items. And I think it should be a combined discussion between their supervisor and themselves on the list of things that they need to be trained on and things they need additional education on. I think it's important that happens. Every single person in this building needs to have a training profile.
But new hires would have already had that. We won't consider people who aren't up to speed already.
There may be some unique things that we do in our school district. There may be some unique things that we do.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but I'm not... But I also don't want to get ourselves to a point where we don't ever do continuing, like professional development.
Oh, no, I agree with you there, absolutely. But I don't want to get in a position, again, where we do not have people trained on munis when they get here.
Yeah, I think we're going to... Well, I have no idea how widespread munis ability is and what that's going to do. I think that's a fine goal to set. I think we should probably recognize that there may be financial considerations that are affected by that, right? We're not going to be able to go cheap anymore. We're going to have to pay for experience.
Okay, but I agree, and I understand exactly where Barbara's coming from, but one of the things we need to clearly understand is munis is widespread.
It's what we use.
Correct.
If we don't use munis, then it's something else.
But if you find an outstanding candidate, that's a CPA and has all the other capabilities, but has just, for whatever reason, has never worked with munis before, that doesn't mean that you may not consider that person. You may decide that you want to put them into training to understand munis. I mean, here's a prime example. I think at one of the meetings, Darlene made an excellent point about John Souza. Great guy, a great individual, but he was never trained on munis. Would you say, no, I don't want him just because he was never trained on munis? If he's trainable, you would bring someone on board like that and make sure they're trained. That's why I said you put a training profile on every single employee, ones you have in-house, and anyone you bring in. You still have to give them a training profile. You can't expect every employee that you hire is fully trained on everything that you do here. It's going to be impossible.
True, but we can include it on job.
You can, oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah.
And the other... I guess the other question is, should it be in the job description explicitly?
Could be. I mean, you put it in there.
Well, that's what we're talking about right now, is do we want to ask for that to be put in there for these positions? There are a number of recommendations, and I think...
To preclude people from...
Perhaps, rather than going through them all, would we take a single item to ask the superintendent to develop a training process for these staff positions and to update the job descriptions to reflect the responsibilities that are outlined in these recommendations?
Well, I mean, what's... I think we should give the superintendent an action item that says he needs to work with the human resources director and put together a... Working with each individual supervisor, of course, but putting together a training profile for every single member of the staff in the administration building. Hey, you know something? Everybody on the staff is smart, but I'm sure there's something that... I mean, I'll use Amory for an example, very smart woman, knows her stuff. I bet you there's a few things that she'd like to know that I don't know about, but she'd like to brush herself up on, get a little bit smarter at. I mean, she'd be dangerous at that point, but no. But no, I mean, I think everybody has it up to... Including the superintendent. Including the superintendent. There's nobody that should not have that training profile done. Everyone.
And that's part of our expectation that we've talked about here in this building. You know, once collectively the school committee has gone through the recommendations of this audit report, and it doesn't stop with this audit report, it goes to everything that Frank has put in place going forward. Mike and I will be reaching out to Masbo to have suggestions going forward. They'll review what we've put in place.
Darlene?
I see. And we met with Darlene today.
Yeah, she should be part of this.
We met with Darlene today. I asked, just for your information, either she or John or both, to be on our search committee and to work with that training piece. One of the things that I had asked her, in terms of as we're putting together, Frank and I are working on keeping a list of everything that we need in terms of processes and procedures, but for as we're putting together our munis training, how would she like to receive the information? You know, certain relationships, certain formats. I likened it to a pitcher and a catcher. You know, do you like it here? Or how do you want to receive it? And so that would be specific more than just a general munis training, so she would be part of it. And she was quite receptive, as was John as well. So that's already included in what we're planning on doing. If you folks wanted to vote these recommendations, we would take them and apply them, along with dozens of others that we've developed and have come across.
I say we do it.
Well, I think the other thing is, in addition simply to voting to recommend, to take these recommendations, we need to know what we're looking for. It doesn't do any good to adopt these recommendations if we don't follow up on it. If we don't know what we're going to get out of these recommendations, then we're just taking a vote, and the report is the report, and it goes away, and then things happen, and some things happen and some things don't. We need identifiable deliverables on this stuff.
That's why I'm saying dates. That's my point.
All right. So we're good with the training profile? That's all we want?
Yeah, I'd like to see an updated job description for a business manager.
Just a business manager?
Well, that's the position we're going to hire, I assume, at some point, since Mr. Antonelli is not interested in caring.
I'd actually kind of like to see him for all of the positions listed in the report here.
I got a deal for you.
So what they lack will become part of their training? I mean, I would assume we have some kind of an outline in our HR files for what the job description is.
I don't know. Have you seen it?
Yes, there is.
I don't know. Yeah.
There is. There is.
I don't run HR.
I'd like to see it.
Okay, I agree with you.
That's what I'm saying.
So you would like to see updated job descriptions for each one of these positions?
For each one of these positions, reflecting the recommendations made.
Okay.
And they might have to be changed.
They might have to be changed. And if the people don't match up with them, that's where the training profile starts.
But I would like to see a...
Right?
That's the whole idea.
I think we're agreeing. All right, just any one...
I'm just concerned about time. I can see priority being the business manager and things related to that, but in terms of getting performance standards for all the positions, when we get all the budget stuff coming in, as soon as you get into spring, it gets... It doesn't let up, it gets worse.
Yeah.
So I think there needs to be sensitivity to timing, and so we hit the things that we need at the time when we need them.
I think that's a good point. I don't think we necessarily have to take these next week, but if they don't go on the list of things we're looking for, I'm concerned that six months from now, nobody's going to remember that we asked.
I agree. Just if we're going to start right away, start with the things that we need right away.
Yeah, prioritize.
We're overhauling our entire department, and before Frank leaves us on June 30th, we will have processes and procedures that'll be in place.
2016?
For not only next business manager, but for everybody in that department.
Yeah.
You know, looking at the particular flows, looking at reports monthly, not only for the school committee, but for us internally, and to be able to have those expectations for folks who run individual budgets. They've not had those expectations in the past. You know, they may have reviewed their line items, but you know, how many open POs do you have? You know, exactly. Frank will be working with us in terms of what those reports look like, so that keeps people's minds, their eyes, inside their budget on a frequent basis. And so I'm looking to have an entirely new flow chart for our business department, the job descriptions. You know, the auditor had made recommendations regarding personnel and so forth. You know, some of the gaps we've seen missing from our sped department to our business department, and looking at those particular gaps. It's... We're looking to revamp the whole thing. I appreciate what you said, Al. Frank, folks have asked many things of him, and such a gentleman said, no, we're going to work on... You know, he's done the end-of-the-year report in the last couple of months. He's relocated all of our line items, working currently on 15 as well as the 16 budget. So we won't have that report for next week, but...
I understand that.
But we'll be working through, and that's our collective ultimate goal, to have that.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion to adopt the recommendations?
All right, I'll take a shot at this.
You're too limited to just adopting the recommendations made by Mr. Sullivan?
Correct.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt the recommendations made by Mr. Sullivan in his audit of the school department accounts.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Field trips, we have none. Oh, sure.
Are we at a point where we could be told what the plans are for the rest of the year for the business manager and our consultant?
What we're looking at right now, as we've just moved on from our previous business manager, you know, working with Mr. Antonelli, he's committed to us at least through the end of the year.
Okay.
And has made it clear that June 30th's a drop-dead date for us.
How much overlap do you... Would you recommend? How much overlap, so that you would be in place to transition?
The more, the better. The more, the better.
So we'll be posting that position this week, and then we'll be putting together search committee and so forth. So we will keep you updated on that, please.
So you'll be able to write the job requirements and such, post it, get together the committee in a week?
No, no. In terms of posting it this week, and what we've done before, we just automatically posted from the job description from 2010. We're in the process of...
Okay.
Relooking at that now. So we anticipate it being posted for this week. Again, things need to be finished in certain lines.
Will we be able to view the description before it is posted?
If that's the desire of the committee.
Yeah.
I don't have any problem with that.
I'm bummed out.
Policy, none to discuss. Liaison reports, finance. Do you guys have a meeting set?
We were waiting. I think we were talking about the... I was just looking at it a few minutes ago. I think our date that we were looking at was going to be not the beginning of the next school committee meeting, but the one afterwards, which I think is 17th. Does that sound right?
That sounds about right.
Because we have to wait. We need to get FY16 out of the way, and then we can really take and dive into finishing up the updates on the 15, so we can take a look at it in earnest. To have a meeting, just to have a meeting defeats the purpose. So we're looking... That was the date that we were talking about, but again, I didn't want to book, set any date at a meeting without checking with Evelyn.
Yeah.
It's only fair. I don't know what her schedule is, so.
Policy?
Yeah, we should be able to present next week. I should be able... Some of the things we discussed, we've already changed, so.
Okay. Maintenance. I understand there's a meeting scheduled.
Wednesday, the 28th, 7:30 in the morning.
Or Thursday, the 29th, at 7:30 in the morning. I have the 29th, but...
I have the 28th.
And we will have the 28th.
Now, unless you're having the meeting in Washington, DC...
Then we will have the 28th.
It's going to be the 28th.
It's good to double-check.
All right, other significant liaison reports?
If I could just briefly... I went to buy them for the first time, and it's an impressive group. I was particularly impressed with the staff being there and the presentations that were made. Ms. Dilman, I think is library aide, did a presentation. And then that was followed by Ms. Curry doing one on art. And the art was really interesting. She's got the kids doing some great things. Just quickly to hit some dates, they may be useful to people. Talent shows, March 21st. Science fair is February 26th. Coats for kids. They weren't finished when I was there. The, the collection of coats stopped on the 10th. They had 61 before the completion. That's pretty impressive, I think.
That's great.
PTO expos, March 10th. And the book fair is March 5th to 13th. And once again, I'll just credit all of the PTOs and parent organizations for the financial support. You know, they unfortunately have to spend a significant amount of time raising money. And, you know, on hand, they have $42,000. You know, and they're already planning for fundraising. So again, without the support of these organizations, we'd be in big trouble.
And machines.
The, the enrichment is really, really a big deal.
And that's, doesn't show up anywhere in the budgets.
No.
Remember that.
Okay, action items. Warren handbook, I did meet with the town accountant to go over some, some mistakes that were made this time around. And that'll go into the write-up, uh, specific examples of things that you have to catch. There was a request for a report on substitutes. Partly in comparing, comparing our system to a Brill Rica type system. But also to find out where we stand with our contract with Kelly. And if it's, if it's coming up shortly, people would like to know if it's, if we're gonna be in it for a while yet. I think there's a desire to talk about having Kelly come out and do a little bit of a presentation for us about what they're offering. Still looking for a breakdown of participation in various clubs by activity fees, but did I hear we're, we're gonna have a.
We'll have some information in the budget.
Regarding the fees.
And regarding the fees. Okay. The MASC and Masbo reviews, I spoke with David Vertolino at Masbo today. He told me that they do a financial operations review. It's kind of a standard format. They've, there are a number of examples online for other towns. Cost runs $5,000 to $6,000. He's willing to sit down and discuss timing and, uh, and, uh, basically what, what it would entail. Is there a desire to go forward with something like that?
What would be, what was the expectation? What would be our expectation?
What information will we get that we didn't get from the audit?
Right.
Oh, I think quite a bit. Go, okay, you know what, I can, I can talk to him and put him off and maybe we take a vote next.
I wanna, yeah, I wanna.
I'd say, go online, take a look at these reports. I'll, I'll send you some links.
Thank you.
But I, I read through a couple of them this afternoon. They're, they're really pretty good.
Okay.
And, and rather detailed in, in setting some expectations for what, for what good budgeting processes look like, what good budgets look like. Things like you should have a narrative with your budget. You know, a lot of things that, you know, I, I, I read through Arlington's and think, hmm, we're gonna get knocked on a lot of the same things that Arlington got knocked on because I just, I don't see it yet. And so.
Arlington is one, the, the town runs their schools.
But they still had the review done. So I think there, there's a lot there. There'll be a lot to, there'll be a lot to challenge us with in terms of doing a better job of, of being transparent and being open. And we'll, we'll, we'll get the MASC going after we get Masbo going, I think, because MASC basically can just come out and do, do it when we have some time. You're, you need to build a spreadsheet next Friday night comparing, comparing the, uh, the corrected FY 14 expenditures. I'll, I've got a couple of thoughts on that. I'll, I'll send them to you. Coming out of Brad Brooks' most recent presentation, there's still a desire to review increases, the drivers of increases in sped costs, including breakdowns on, on numbers of kids going into and out of, plans on a, on kind of a by-year basis. And also. Break, breakdown by grade. The sick bank review that we, or, or discussion of the sick bank issue that we heard about at the, at the public input, the public Q and A, I guess, for the report.
Yeah.
Can you just say a couple of words about this? This is a, the teachers' union didn't have as many days in the bank as they thought they did.
Wiped out.
It was.
How did they get wiped out?
They all had to contribute again.
But how did they get wiped out?
Well, let me, let me share with you. There, when Ken came on board, he had looked at the sick bank accounting of the sick days and didn't feel that there was a good accounting of them. So he worked collaboratively with the former president of CFT and the current president of CFT. The administration actually initiated this conversation. Ken contacted them.
CFT administration?
No. Ken did.
Okay.
And contacted Ben and contacted Catherine, invited them in. And they worked, I don't know the details of this necessarily, other than that they had worked out an agreement so that they could get a better accounting of it. Collaboratively, they had agreed to collect an additional day from everybody and essentially reestablish that baseline. And they worked on that collaboratively. So I was surprised that there was, I, I'm not even sure what the question was or.
I'm, I'm not entirely sure myself.
So I, I was going to have Ken contact Ben in terms of, in terms of, you know, what the issue is. Because that's something we contacted them. They had resolved. And that was the end of it, as far as I know. So we'll get back on that.
Okay. A DOR review to identify potential efficiencies between town and school operations. This is a request from Janet Askenberg on the Board of Selectmen that, that we look into this, that, that we as a town look into this. It would require a, a vote both by this committee as well as the Board of Selectmen. Thoughts on pursuing such a review?
I have no problems whatsoever. What have we got to lose? I mean, it's only a review. It's not, what they say is not, we still have to approve, you know, accept their recommendation.
Yeah, but when she started her, her dialogue, she said, like we did for the, for the town side. My understanding is the DOR came in and did some sort of an audit and supplied information. That's what I was, we had talked about this last fall, that the DOR would come in and we would subject ourselves to the same kind of audit that the town side did. And then all of a sudden, we jumped over to the schools giving up financial control to the town side. Which, you know, we've considered before in the past and.
So, right, the, the DOR does not do a review of school districts comparable to what it does for town operations. But this is yet another function that they offer that, that looks, uh, looks to identify efficiencies between the town and the school operations. It could mean that their recommendation would be as, you know, far-reaching as saying you should have a single business manager. But it could also be more limited in scope. It could say you should have one payroll person. Or it should say you should have somebody who spends, you know, half of their week in the town offices and half of their week in the school offices. I, I, I did read through a couple of the other, a couple of those reports. And there was a, there was a little bit of a variation in, in what they were suggesting might work. And it did seem to be fairly tailored to the individual towns.
Yeah, I would be for anything that would promote efficiencies. I would appreciate any insight they had on that. That would be terrific.
Al?
You don't wanna know what I was gonna say.
No, I do.
I think it's a great idea. We'll have the town join our business department because we're much bigger than.
There's a, there's something to be said for that.
You're drawing an assumption.
You know, I don't, I don't wanna put us in a position where we are going to make a huge change, change at a time when we are at the lowest of lows. We are just digging ourselves out of what turned out to be an absolute fiasco. We are at our most vulnerable. Let's get back on our feet. Let's, let's get steady and then let's get, get moved to something with a clear head. I don't want to be reactionary. I want, whenever, all the ducks in a row, we're breathing again, we can project what things are, things are gonna happen, then we look at it with clear eyes.
So not, not do this now?
If they, you know, any, any advice that they can have to get us back to a solid position is great. But to say, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna give up our, our control to the town side or whatever, whatever they, you know, the recommendation is now, I, I would not.
But the problem is, we don't know what they're gonna say.
I know.
So maybe we shouldn't do it right now. Is that what you're saying?
Kind of. I wanna get, I wanna be in a place where we can say, okay, now come look at us.
Well, I, I think you're right that we're at a, that we're at a point of flux. I mean, obviously, we're, we're changing the way we do things. We're, we're rethinking our operations internally. But as Nick says, we don't have to adopt any of their recommendations either. If we feel that they're too far-reaching or that, you know, even if it's just coming at a bad time, if we bring them in and we have it done, the recommendations presumably will be useful a year from now as well. Or we could do it again then. It's been 10, it's been 10 years since we've looked at this sort of thing. And I, and I think that's, you know, it, I don't know if anybody else out there has a better idea. Reading, reading through the, the two reports that I saw, it didn't look like there was a brand-new way of doing business in Massachusetts, municipal government. But I think it doesn't hurt to, doesn't hurt to have them come in and take a look.
No, like I said, I'll take any advice, but I want us to be solid.
It is nothing.
Oh, it costs nothing?
It costs nothing. They will do it for free.
Just one of the things I would, I would add there, Mike, as we're looking at Masbo, as we're looking at MASC, as we're looking at the DOR. A conversation regarding coordination in terms of looking at it from our staff's perspective.
It takes a lot of, they have power to do that.
I'm not envisioning MASC coming in and interviewing people. I think, I think Masbo will. I think MASC, it's more of a presentation to the committee. Just kind of saying, this is what you should be looking for in your policies. It's, it'll be very committee-centric as opposed to Masbo, which I think will look more at the.
Operations-centric.
Operations, but also reading through the reports, there's an emphasis on the budgeting kind of process and, and the documents that come out of that. All right. Evelyn had indicated, I won't say reluctance, but, but a sense that if this, if this were going to be a suggestion that was being put forward by a member of the Board of Selectmen, it might, it might be best for us to wait until the Board of Selectmen actually takes a vote on this before we take a vote ourselves. So at this point, we've had a, we've had a conversation. I think it should be apparent to everybody how the, how the individual members of this committee feel.
All right, you should note off to Pat.
I will, I will tell, I will advise Pat of the, of the conversation, assuming she's not watching right now. And, uh.
It's 10:20.
Right. When they, when the, when the Board of Selectmen takes a vote on this, we will schedule a vote for this body subsequent to that.
I would like to hear Evelyn's perspective.
I would like to hear Evelyn's perspective on it.
And she has, you know, she has a legitimate concern and.
I think it's a reasonable thing to say. And, and again, she has a, I, I think of all of us, she has the best historical perspective on it as well.
But I think you should contact Pat.
I will, I will let Pat know. Okay, I've added something to our action items, which is upcoming meetings. The budget, the preliminary budget release will be done next Tuesday here at 7 o'clock, although it's not scheduled yet. But we'll do it here. We'll televise it. It'll be 7 o'clock. We have a public hearings on the budget itself scheduled for the 10th of February. If we're going to be considering.
16, not 15, because 15 is.
Yeah, for the FY 16 budget, public input on the FY, on the preliminary FY 16 budget. Right now, we have that scheduled for the 10th of February. Is that a reasonable time? If we're gonna be, if.
You know, it, it, the only.
Can't do it the 3rd because we've got a regular meeting then, although I guess we could take some public comment.
I guess. I, I think, I think it's too soon, and I'll tell you the reason why. We're gonna give it to Paul. Paul's gonna need to digest it, okay? He's gonna come back to us with his recommendations. We're gonna need.
On the 2nd of February, which is when the next tri-board meeting is scheduled for.
We're gonna need to, and, and, you know, FinCom is gonna get their input on it as well. Then we're gonna need to take a look at their thoughts and recommendations to see how it affects it. And we might have to make additional changes to it. I think to say the 10th is a good time to have a meeting, might be a little premature because we may be presenting something that isn't, I won't say finalized, but it's too preliminary.
Well, I think that's the question. How much, I mean, are, are we gonna, are we gonna bring something forward on the 27th and say, all right, we'll, we'll listen to what Paul has to say and, and there must be a, there must be a FinCom meeting in there somewhere too. And then we're gonna try to make adjustments based off of those? Or do we wanna get public comments if we need to make adjustments on what people's priorities are?
Okay.
And if we wanna.
I can go either way. I mean, I just don't know what my schedule's like, but I can go either way. I mean, there's so many days left in the month.
I guess my concern is not so much the 10th being too early as much as being too late.
The 10th too late?
If we're gonna, if, if we're gonna consider public input and then, and then put forward a revised budget and get it into the hands of FinCom, I don't think, I, I don't believe we've scheduled a final presentation to them yet. We still will have to do a presentation of the final budget that we're recommending to town meeting. Things are starting to pile up.
No, you just, there's no way you can compress that in. There's no way. I just don't see, that's.
So can we live with the 10th?
Well, you're gonna have to live with, if you wanna live with that, that's fine. Some of us may or may not be here.
Yeah, understood. All right, but we'll leave it for the 10th for now. Tri-board on the 2nd. We have regular meetings on the 3rd and the 24th. We're off the week of the 17th. That's a February break. Some of us are happier about that break than others, apparently. Anything else, meeting-wise?
One thing I'll say is my poor wife will buy herself.
All right, for new action items, I have a request that we put, that we put the full-day kindergarten chart online. And all of the presentations will be put online. Anything else that came out tonight?
Yeah, the spreadsheet, um, of the, the detailed spreadsheet off the summary for the full-day kindergarten. In addition to that, a detailed breakdown of one-time costs and.
Okay, versus recurring?
Yes.
Okay. Finally, I, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna react to some of the public input we heard earlier tonight. There's, there's one thing, I'm, I'm gonna let most of it speak for itself. People certainly have a right to their opinion. However, I'm a little concerned that we're being characterized as having taken a long time to deal with the situation that we're still in the middle of. A comment was made that it's been five months since this process started, and that's, that's long enough. In counterpoint, I would say it's actually been about 15 days, two weeks, since the Sullivan report got released. And a Sullivan report is the document that has essentially defined for us what exactly happened. That was part of the problem at the beginning, was that it was not entirely clear exactly what had happened. We'll take the report. We've been working with it. We've had, we've heard, we've had a tri-board meeting. We've had a public Q and A on it. We've had a discussion of it tonight. That's one step in the process. The process isn't over. We're gonna continue to go forward with it. But my, my emphasis is to get something right, to get the right answer, not to get a quick answer. And we'll continue doing that. All right, questions from the press? Okay. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 10:29. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 10:29 PM.
I'll move.
Is there a second? All in favor? Thank you, this meeting is adjourned. Our next scheduled meeting is the preliminary FY16 budget presentation next Tuesday, January 27th. Good night.